I'd like to remind everyone here that the meeting is being digitally recorded, so please be respectful of each other when you're speaking as well as when you're listening. So the first thing we'll ask, is there anyone here for an open session?
On anything other than the roads maintenance plan?
Okay. Katie, announcements.
All right, so for anybody that wasn't paying attention, we had some fun summer concerts at the park this year. The last one of the four in the series was this past Saturday. It was a little chilly, but the rain held off, so that's a plus. It was the high-powered mutants and Jacamos came out again and Plainview was there and the Girl Scouts were there, the Boy Scouts were there. It was, it was very fun. People have been asking about next year, and I said, well, can we get through this year for lovely God people? So, summer concerts are officially done and we'll see about possibly doing them next year. Next thing that's coming up is most likely this Saturday, scheduled for this Saturday, but there seems to be some lovely weather coming along. So it might be pushed back to Sunday, but the Dinghy Dash is coming. If you've never been to the Dinghy Dash, you don't know what you're missing, come on down to Brigham Pond. We're scheduled for Saturday at 10:00 a.m. If it's a rain date, I'll get the word out and it'll be Sunday at 10:00 a.m. But we all, the people that enter, race cardboard boats that are made out of nothing but cardboard and duct tape. And it's super fun, bring your camp chair, picnic blanket, and come sit down there to watch us all race cardboard boats for fun. We have three different categories to choose. We have single occupant youth, single occupant adult, and group vessel of two to four people. There's prizes for all of these, and then we have prizes for best sink, most creative vessel, and extended voyage. It's super fun, the deadline's technically today to enter, but we'll never ever turn people away, just get me the form now as soon as possible. So anyway, that's this weekend. Coming up on the September 2nd and 3rd, 10 to 4 at Plainview Farm, they're having a fall festival. There'll be a lot of local crafters and vendors there, there'll be food there, come see the alpacas, it's gonna be a fun time for all. And again, that's the September 2nd and 3rd from 10 to 4. September 9th at 9:00 a.m. is the 26th Annual Library 5K. So you can sign up on the website through the Hubbardston Library, they have forms and stuff on there. But it's, yeah, the 26th Annual 5K, it's a fun time if you've never been to those, those are a good run as well. Definitely check it out. September 16th, 9 to 2 at the Rec Field is Field Day. They usually have a whole bunch of stuff, the Lions put that on, there's food, there's entertainment, there's fun to be had by all, so that's September 16th, 9 to 2. September 23rd, if you haven't seen it yet, is our townwide yard sale. Rain date of the 24th, you just gotta send an email to me at hubbardston250@gmail.com. And put your name and address on there, the names won't be posted, but the addresses will, it's free to enter, free maps, free everything this year. I'm just putting together a list and we're just gonna have fun and everybody purge your junk out of your closets and cardboard, cardboard, Jesus, still talking about Dinghy Dash. Attics and basements, get all the stuff out. And again, that's September 23rd with a rain date the 24th, and I think we're starting at like 7:00. Good enough. And then the last thing for September is the Boy Scouts Bottling Can Drive on September 30th from 8:00 to 12:00 at the Rec Field. So the other thing is if you have your, you know, bottles and cans that have been stacking up in your garage, that's a good place to get rid of them, all the money goes to Boy Scout Troop 22. So that's all the good fun stuff for the next couple of months.
Okay, any questions, comments? Thank you, Katie. All right, we move to item four, which is the QRSD School Committee Appointment. So we'll invite the school committee people to join us at the table. It's four of you, do we have four chairs?
There are three of them.
No, it's three.
Oh, three, I'm sorry, okay. And again, do we have anyone of the candidates here?
I'm here on behalf of my husband.
And that is, is that Joseph?
Yes.
Okay, all right. May I want you to explain this, how we'll be handling this, and then I'll mention the three candidates and open it for questions.
Thank you for attending this evening. For those of you who I have not met, my name is Nate Boudreau, I am the Town Administrator here in Hubbardston. The, what do you call them, the bylaws, the regulations of the Quabbin bylaws?
The regional agreement.
The regional agreement states that when there is a vacancy based upon a spot that is not filled in the annual town election, that it will be jointly filled by a meeting of the sitting Quabbin Regional School District Representatives from Hubbardston and the Select Board. That is what happened this year. There were two available seats, one was Deb, and Deb ran uncontested, and then no one ran for the second one. And so we had posted it about three weeks ago stating that there was a availability for a person to serve in an interim or acting basis until the next annual town election. If those, if any of you were at the past town meeting, this is what I was talking about with the positions that kinda stack up. Cause over time, this could end up with all of the positions being open in one false loop. But we did get four candidates, one candidate had to drop out last minute due to a issue with employment. But, so that's what brings us here today, that's what brings us here today, I know what brings you here today.
Everybody else is here by their own reason.
Want to explain how the vote will have to be?
There will be a vote, but when I looked in, a person has to get the majority. So if we do the first vote and someone doesn't have the majority of the seven, we'll knock out the lowest one and vote again.
Okay, thank you, Nate.
Who are the seven, Nate? You, the four Select Board members, Heather, who is online.
So that's actually eight.
Yes, eight, sorry, there was a seven in front of us, eight.
So we may end in a tie.
Heather's here, Heather, you there?
Yep, we're waiting on Heather.
So who are the eight?
The five Select Board members and the three School Committee Representatives. And Heather is logging on. Hi Heather, can you hear us?
Can't hear her.
You're muted.
I can hear you.
All right.
Can you hear us, okay?
Yes.
Okay, before we get into the actual process, in a nutshell, we have three candidates and in case anyone didn't hear initially, they were all invited to be here. They were contacted several times, different ways, cause last time it was a mix-up. So they have all been contacted and they opted, with the exception of representing your husband.
He would've been here just to join conflict.
One is Dixie Estes, she has an extensive background in education as a teacher in Wachusett, principal of sector and so forth. Mr. Joseph Afonso, he's got a lot of background in tech. And he's, people know the Afonso family in town. And we have Charity Chaffee, she has a young child in Hubbardston School, she's currently a mental health counselor. Her degree is in biology and environmental studies with a minor in secondary education, she works with youths in their school districts. Those are the three, so that at this point, we'll open the discussion by anyone who was present to speak on behalf of, anyone you wish, and if it really gets, then we'll, wordy et cetera, we'll limit it. So Deb, you wanna start it off?
I did have an opportunity to speak to Dixie. She, like you said, had worked at Wachusett, so she's familiar with regional schools, budgeting as a principal, she has a lot of the background that we would need. The only concern I had is, she, she applied last year as well, and both times she expressed concerns, asking about a time commitment.
Yes, she did.
So that would, I mean, it's not an abundance of time, and she, she felt that it would be manageable for her, but she likes to volunteer in other places, so.
Didn't we reach out to her on that very question?
Yep.
And did she get back to us and saying, oh, wasn't it?
I don't believe she said, Tony was out sick today, so, and I don't know who would've responded to her personal work email.
So that was, that's the only interaction I had with any of the candidates, cause she had had a question, so I had called her for that, so. That's the only feedback I have.
All set?
Yeah.
All right, I'll go. After reading over all of these.
Mr. Chairman, Peter, excuse me, is there any chance that just out of respect, we can let Mrs. Afonso speak, just cause she is here representing her husband?
Absolutely, sure.
I don't know if anyone has any specific questions for me. My husband did ask me to extend his desire to be a part of the school committee, he grew up here in town, he was a student of the Quabbin Regional School District. My mother-in-law Nancy was a teacher here at Hubbardston. And he has always had a love and a desire to see students and children succeed to the best of their ability. And just in recent years, he has, with the help of a few others, instituted kids' day events at local clubs. Bringing kids out, teaching them how to make birdhouses, walking sticks, things of that nature. He really just, he wants to see students succeed, and he wants to see the Quabbin School District succeed as well, and help it along, making sure that the students get the best education they can.
Can I ask you a question?
What's she, what are questions, Dan?
Okay.
I mean, I don't have much else to say beyond that.
No, that's okay.
The only question I have, why didn't he run for the position?
I'm not sure if he was aware that there was an opening for the position. It's probably something he saw, if it was posted on Facebook, he probably saw it there, and thought that this would be a good way for him to help the district.
Yeah, I mean, it was on the ballot, I mean, he did it on the vote or whatever, that's, which is fine, it's your choice, but that was my only question. It's not a big deal.
Yes, go ahead.
Did you say that he has a tech background?
Yes, he is actually in incident management, so he has a lot to do with, like, if companies have data leadages and things like that, he helps manage that, and he just, he's had, his career has been in tech. And so, yeah.
I'm just thinking in terms of, you know, all the concerns surrounding AI now in school districts.
He is very aware of all of that, he'd be able to certainly add input onto what are safe things to use, what's safe technology, software.
Yeah, that would be.
What are things to avoid, he is well-versed in all of that.
I'm on the techs, so I was gonna say, there are only two of us on that committee right now.
Do you'd like to look at this, that's his background.
So, yeah, I just wanted to know a little bit more about that, I think that is something that would be needed, Mark. So, thank you.
Any other?
I think the last time, Mark, we were on the School Committee, the last time we spoke, I think, I thought we were leaning towards folks who might actually have students in school. You know, it's sort of like, whatever vested interest in what's going on, like his faces. Now, which brings it down to Charity and Joe, who both kinda like, you know, a little bit of a concern of Dixie and, you know, this, how much time does it take, has come up a couple of times. And quite honestly, I'm getting a call to a meeting tomorrow night, you know, I mean, something critical came up, so I mean, it's, it's not that easy to predict. So that's my only, I mean, I could, either Charity or Joseph, he does have an excellent technical background. He went to Wentworth, he worked for Oracle, he has a really strong technical background.
Charity has the mental health, which there's a lot of social emotional needs in the schools right now, so.
I'm drawn towards Charity myself because I saw that mental health, like, oh, green flag, let's go, let's go run, run for racist because there's a lot of that going on. Her just having that broad knowledge kinda flipped the switch on me, but that's, you know, me personally.
I'm not, I'm already, yeah, I'm just ready to vote. Just let's get this party started.
Chris?
I'm commotion of vote.
Commotion's made to take a vote, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, okay. Anyone would like to nominate who they would like to vote? First, I'll call them off, I guess, just hand it that way, okay? I'll just stop at my list, so Dixie Estes, is there?
Mr. Chair, can I ask that you just call upon the member and ask who their, who their vote is for?
Okay, yep, we can do that, all right. So, who are you leaning towards?
My vote would be for Joseph. Joseph.
My vote would be for Joseph.
Joseph.
I'll go with my members and vote for Joseph.
Charity Chaffee.
Charity?
Charity Chaffee.
Charity?
I'm going with Joseph.
Joseph?
Yeah.
Heather.
Charity.
Excuse me?
Charity, she's.
What did I miss?
Heather.
Heather, Charity.
Oh, thanks, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, we're four to four.
Super fun, you saw that coming from a mile away, didn't you?
I really did, I really did.
That's the odds.
Jeff, who did you vote for? Charity.
That was gonna be my question. Yep, that's four of them.
So Dixie has been eliminated.
Okay.
All right.
Is there anybody that has a question to their opposing voters about what they saw in said candidate that could potentially sway you to the other side? I guess I will open that, open that sort of discussion, cause if we stay locked four-four, we'll either be here all night, or we will not have a School Committee Representative.
I could sway my vote. I, I was pleased with both areas of expertise, so I would, I would be, my first thought when I looked at them was Charity. But as I learned more and think about the IT background, that would be valuable also, but.
So I make commotion that we hold another vote.
All right, we'll go around again to make sure it's, touch again.
Charity.
Charity?
Yeah.
Okay.
I changed my vote.
I'll stick with Joseph.
Charity.
All right, Peter?
Charity.
Chris?
Charity Chaffee.
Katie?
I'm still going with Joseph.
And I'll go with Charity, so.
And Heather.
Heather?
Charity.
The vote is six to two. Charity is the, what do you remember?
Can I just make one comment?
Sure.
This whole process, as Nate alluded to, is really because people didn't, didn't sign up to be candidates for the School Committee.
We have a lot of empty spots.
We really, hopefully Charity, you know, decides to continue forward. Anybody who gets elected to this position will hopefully continue forward. We're talking, now, what do we, what do we got left, you know, we got until June, right? So really, ten, ten, ten months, pardon me?
We kept Joanne, we didn't scare her.
Well, is this a problem?
No, it's just.
Yes, please.
I think the problem is, many people are surprised that they have to pull papers, like, they don't know. And I think the town clerk, when I was here, made it very clear to me when I was sworn in, that I needed to pull papers. You know, cause I was elected by, I was elected by the board here, and she made it very clear to me. And I don't know with the changeover in town clerks that we've had, if it's been made clear to these people that they need to pull papers and get signatures and run and be on the ballot. I mean, everybody I've talked to is surprised that, cause we've had like two people now that have done that, that have not pulled papers.
Well, I know the town clerk, as presently the town clerk, she put out an extensive list prior to the actual election, stating every position that was elected, position and appointed that was empty. And so it was very much there on the town site and.
I mean, this is the second election cycle, this is happening, so.
Yeah, I can't hear it at all.
Yeah.
I think, you know, we as members should also kind of remind them when the time comes near that, don't forget.
I think, I think just the.
Does she? Okay.
See, I think Charity, I don't know how, I don't think she's been in town super long, I thought I read.
Yeah, now she hasn't.
Yeah, so she has an excuse, I guess, I don't know, it's on the ground.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, with that, I will have the town clerk reach out to Charity and give her instructions on how to be sworn. And we will reach out to Jessica Bennett in the superintendent's office to allow them to do their side of this.
May I just ask one last thing? If she declines for some reason, since she wasn't here this evening, could we appoint Joseph then at that point, since he was the second?
It would go to Joseph.
I don't know if we'd have to come back in two weeks and do this for a third time.
He got votes, so.
Mrs. Afonso, there's gonna be an election in June. If Joe wants to run, there's gonna be two positions, Joe wants to run.
I'm gonna get on him about that and let him know if he would.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to sign as one of the people, he needs 20 signatures, so.
Okay, then, all right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mark, thanks.
Thank you. Mark, good luck with the line.
Okay.
Peter, sorry for, sorry for cutting you off, she was looking nervous as is, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, she was kinda put on a spark.
There's more front rowers if anyone wants to come stand. Come join the party, people, come on, Travis.
I'm in the row, Travis.
Have a seat.
You're right, many folks have watched what happened.
Not that these benches are comfortable in any way, she.
Okay, we'll now move to the five-year road plan discussion, Travis? I was about to bite you up.
He's already here.
So Nate, Travis, turn it over to you for the time being.
Thank you, thank you all for attending this evening. After the release of the roads plan, the roads maintenance plan, I had received a number of, I don't wanna call them complaints, they're never complaints, but concerned citizens reaching out and making note of the changes to the roads plan. With that, I thought it was only fair to allow the residents to, the opportunity to ask questions of myself, of Director Brown of the DPW, Travis, or of the Select Board. At that same time, the select, two or three members of the Select Board had noted their interest in also talking about the roads plan. So it all worked out, and here we are this evening. So I will open it with Travis beginning to talk about how we choose the roads that are placed on the road maintenance plan based upon priority, et cetera, et cetera, cause I think that is a valuable place to start. Thank you, Travis.
Good evening, everyone. Honestly, I travel the roads, I plow the roads, I see what's there. Came into this position being way behind the eight ball on roads, so between being behind and funding not being there, we do it the best we can. I come up with a whole spreadsheet on roads that gives me costs of every roads and what different materials I could use on them, either be preventative maintenance, full-depth reclamation, paving, gives me all the estimates. So I'm able to see what I'm able to do within a year on a $357,000 Chapter 90 budget that the state gives to town. Actually, this year they took a thousand from us, so the past two years, we were able to get a thou, a hundred thousand from the town to add to it. In those couple of years, what everybody understands with COVID and everything, is that materials, doesn't matter what it is, from food to whatever it may be, has gone skyrocketing out of, out of control. So my $350,000 to do maybe a couple of roads has now been a road. So like this year, doing, we did Pitcherville. One part of Berches, the paved section, and then we did the other section of Cross between Raggedale and New Templeton Road. The only way that was done was because I had some left over from the year prior and the hundred thousand from the town. And even then, it's not doing everything that was on the plan to do. It's been many years. I have the year prior, a couple of years prior to this, we did Williamsville Road. It was really bad. I had it to do Williamsville Road, and it was, I believe it was Simon Hill and S.R., and that was if we get the hundred thousand from the town. We didn't get the hundred thousand from the town, and those got bumped, they were never, never done, didn't have any money. So then, the year prior to that was the Williamsville Bridge. The Williamsville Bridge, we have a grant from the town, from the state. We had TEC do all the work, engineering, and help us get us there. The state's taking the funding over on that. So it was supposed to happen last year, as we know, the state likes to drag their feet on things, so now it got kicked to next year. They didn't like the detour path because the bridge would be closed down, so we had to, they didn't like Cruz and Thompson Road, cause they were really bad. So we moved, I believe it was Elm Street, Brigham, Parsons and Barry Road was moved down to allow that detour to be paved, so we could get the funding. So we did that, then it came into this year, and I had to bump again Brigham Street, Elm Street, Parsons, Barry Road, because Main Street. Main Street was supposed to happen, and then got bumped again, so now it's happening now, and it's gonna happen next year. So I still couldn't do Parsons, Elm Street, Brigham, Parsons or Barry Road. So they've honestly got knocked down two to three times, just to accept, cause I couldn't close down the town. So Pitcherville moved up because, obviously that, and you guys were behind Pitcherville. Unfortunately, with the soft winter that we had, and these roads have been in repair, so I've been trying to do, and which you've probably seen through town, preventative maintenance to extend these other roads that we've done, give us some time to catch up on these other ones that need, you know, dire repair, so. And that, and that being said, when I first started, one of my big projects was the other end of New Westminster, from Mare Meadow to West, the Westminster Town Line. That's do, that was by far one of our problem areas, on the corner there, was falling apart, the overlay was coming up, had potholes all the time, we were consistently on the road. So now, unfortunately, the other half of it is doing the same, including Brigham. And it's doing exactly what Route 62 and Barry is doing, and it's, the overlay is coming up, and it's leaving these potholes everywhere. And you fill the pothole, but because the pavement's degrading and falling apart, it just opens up another pothole, so it's an endless chase and very expensive. So what I, what I'm trying to get at is that we're doing the best we can with it. We moved things around prior to, we have very, we have a lot of complaints on New Westminster Road, especially after the winter. The winters are, the past two have been very soft, nothing's froze up, and so the, between plows and the rain, and then it rains and it freezes and it just pops, it just beats the pavement up. So this winter that had just passed, New Westminster and Brigham Street had been, you know, under real dire, falling apart quick, cause they have a tremendous amount of car activity, heavy, light, fast, it's all there, so. Because I couldn't do Elm Street, Brigham and Barry Road, I moved, I had, I had to put New West, excuse me, New Westminster in there because it was falling apart, and actually, most of it's on one lane, so I have really only money, cause that's a very long road, only have money to do a lane. So I've been looking into what it costs to shim these certain, certain sections of road to help prolong, so maybe I can move on to something else, but I'm getting, I'm waiting on some quotes on it. But other than that, it's, it really goes by, you know, physically seeing the road, listening to residents, and honestly, what it's, what we have to fix the roads. We did offer a plan a couple of, few years ago that passed that town meeting, but didn't pass ballot. passed that town meeting, but didn't pass ballot vote, and that was to match the Chapter 90 to speed up the process to get our roads to where they need to be, and then get it to a point where we can maintain them. It's a lot cheaper to maintain than it is to fully, you know, reclaim a road, repave the whole nine. So I try to, if you've looked back into some of them, of the road plans that, you know, Ryan had put up, we had put up, to show you the difference in cost of what it costs to full-depth reclamation, pave a road mile-wise, and then we did how much for just regular preventative maintenance, and how many miles a road we can do to that for a lesser amount of money. And that, and with all that said, in helping in doing that, there is a, they call it a pavement condition index. So there's a rating, actually, that you, your town has, and it, and it goes by the, the condition of your pavement. Honestly, Hubbardston has been coming up. It's just, unfortunately, there's money to fix a road now, and we've been lucky. They've thrown in some, there was a RAP program, they threw us some money. So that's where I did crack sealing, I did, right here on Worcester Road, I did preventative maintenance there, because that's five years old, we haven't done anything to it, and the last thing the town needs to take on another $3.5 million road that we know we'd never be able to do. That was a tip grant, this is a tip grant, and God, the road the year before was a tip grant. You know, we had probably about $10 million worth from the state to do these roads, that the town would never have. So like I'm saying is that we had the RAP that came in, I used that for that, because I didn't have money for crack sealing and have it for the preventative maintenance. And then now, and I've mentioned it a few times, that I honestly think that we should put that program that we, you know, the board had put together, that the residents would, depending on your homes, I believe it was like 100 or 200, extra in your taxes a year. And that money goes into an account specifically for the roads, can't be used for anything else. And at any time, if it wasn't being used correctly, the townspeople could come in and say, we don't want to do it anymore. What was nice about it was that it wasn't a grant, it wasn't, not so much a grant, it wasn't like a bond or something like that where you're paying interest on. This was all the taxpayers' money going into an account and going straight to the roads, period, and which is the way it should be. So quite honestly, the only way we're gonna get forward and move and help out residents is to really do that and pass that, you know, program that we set. Because, you know, I hear people call, and I understand their frustration. I plow the roads, and Dogwoods is my route, and I'm not on it with my big truck, because my big truck will be a grader on it, so I send a small truck on it, and I come in there and I treat it afterwards. The only time I was in there plowing was during that real big, heavy snowstorm, when we finally got in there, and the small truck couldn't do it, so I went through and I plowed. But literally, I'm doing my best not to tear the road up and hold it together. We hot-patched it, I believe it was a couple of years ago. I had my guy in there today. We're only down to literally two guys out on the road, and I'm out there helping them, so that makes three. Down two guys in the shop, so it's not that we don't want to be out there, it's, I don't have anybody to be out there. But quite honestly, I hear people call, and they say, I spent thousands of dollars on my car. So it's just, it makes sense to me is that if they have a program the town would want to run to help us bring our roads up to snuff for maybe a couple hundred dollars extra in my taxes, that outweighs the $1,000 I paid to have my front end done every year or whatever, you know. So I am all 100% behind you. I would fix every road if I had the money. And I think my background shows that I will put pavement on the ground if I have money. I squeeze every little dollar I have to put it down. We want to plow smooth roads, we want to travel smooth roads. I totally get it. So, you know, do we look at road count? Absolutely. Do we want to throw that in people's face? No, we don't, you know. I mean, New Templeton Road by far gets the most cars on it. We haven't touched that. We've been trying to get other ones. And we've been hot-patching, we hot-patched it this year in an area that we have an issue with. It got washed away with the, with the rain that we had. I mean, brand-new roads that we had got washed away in some areas because COVID's just, there were overcapacity, you couldn't take the water, it went down the side of the road, it eroded. So we've been spending money there that took from where I have a little budget for road maintenance, as in like hot-patching and stuff like that. Now I had to take it to patch roads that were already good, that washed away. So it's, we're looking into possibly, maybe the state giving us some money back for what we put into it, so we are doing our due diligence there. It really just comes down to lack of funds. It, it just does. I mean, when I was doing a lot of these roads, they were like $62 a ton. They're at $92 a ton. It's the same with salt, you know, what we put on the roads. I was at $60, it's literally $97 a ton. So everything's gone up. My budget hasn't gone up, and I'm trying to fix roads. So honestly, it's nothing against the Dogwoods, the Geordie, or Laurel, it's nothing about that. There's other streets that have been knocked down because of either Main Street projects or anything like that that has nothing to do with it. It's just how it falls into it. And that was how it was. I moved the plan down, and just put in a road that was, like I said, was highly traveled and falling apart really hard. So if you want to look at a speed factor, I get cars running 40 to 50 miles an hour on New Westminster Road, depending on where you are, and as you stated, six miles an hour in your car, you, you, I'm gonna have a worse output on a high, high rate of speed road than I am on a back road, unfortunately. These areas that you're talking about, we'll look to do our best to get in, to do some hot-patching and holding it together. Unfortunately, your road only got a base coat, and that is, and that, and matter of fact, the company.
And it does happen.
Yeah, and that's what happens, is that it breaks up, and alligators, and they call it alligatoring, because if you look at the back of an alligator, it's all those little squares, that's what they call it when pavement does that. Once it does that, and the water can get in between it, it doesn't take much for a heavy plowing truck to pick it back up, so. And the soft winters, by far, I mean, that was, we had that everywhere. I mean, I was just plowing, shaking my head, because by far, I could just see dollar bills flying out. So I just ask for everybody to, you know, be patient, and, and if you can, literally just get all your people together and have it vote that through. I mean, that's a, that is a big help to getting Hubbardston back up for its infrastructure. Everybody travels the roads. It's not like a person in town does, everybody does. So by far, I think that's our, our best option, because the state's not gonna give us any more. We have people that are, that are always in there, trying to add more money to our Chapter 90, and they just keep turning it down. So, you know, this wouldn't be the only, the only town that does this, you know, and I would like to see it, and I would promise you I'd put it right down on the road and you'd be happy with it. So that was the only reason why the roads were moved. So it, it wasn't just you guys getting bumped, everybody got shoved down, and that's where we stand.
Can I ask a question?
Travis, one second, please. And that's something we are looking into, kind of a shameless plug, I am looking for people to get involved in a working group that's going to look at solving some of the financial problems, because it's difficult. When we're talking about roads on one side, we're talking about schools on the other, and it's all coming from the same taxpayers with a limited commercial base, and that is heavy on us, is heavy on the people that work here, it's heavy on the Select Board. So we understand what it is like to have your road pushed down for a higher priority road that is more traveled, and we do feel badly about that. Travis, I, the Select Board would pave everywhere if, if possible, but it's not possible. So if any of you are interested and have a financial background, we would be interested in hearing more about what you have to say with your priorities and the type of things we would like to see funded, and how to fund them. So, Mr. Chairman.
Before I open it up to you, to further explain something, to make you folks aware, in case you're not aware, we are, meaning the town, in a financial crisis, and that is not made up, it's not fake news, it is fact, in terms of the way we have been living, and we want to try to stop it now, is all of our expenditures outclassed and are much more on a continuous basis every year than our revenue. And any kind of a business like that is not sustainable. If we have level funding, budgeting, for example, in the departments, that doesn't solve it, because expenses go up. We don't. Most of our money comes from property taxes. We have only 4% to 5% roughly, commercial revenue. This is what we're facing. As you can hear from Travis, they do everything they possibly can, but without exaggeration, it is a money issue. And unless we make some, some changes, which we have to consider, we cannot sustain ourselves this way, every year spending more than what we're bringing in. So that's the situation we are in. So we've had our say, so please feel free to.
And that extra $100, $100,000 is proof of the commitment this town has to its roads. There are communities three times the size, four times, five times of Hubbardston that do not take an additional $100,000 and throw it at their roads. So the Select Board has spoken, the people have spoken, the DPW and the administration have spoken on that. Roads are a priority. However, you can't throw absolutely everything at it. I would love to see us continue to be able to put that additional $100,000 towards the road to supplement the Chapter 90 funds, but that unfortunately is going to be one of the first things that go if the systematic deficit continues, and it is like, it is going to, unless there is something figured out and proposed and action is made. So, Mr. Chairman, I ask that if anyone is going to speak, if they could state their name and address for this.
Yes, please do. If one recognizes you, just give us your name and address, and who would like to.
I, I just am curious.
Your name, please.
Diane Murphy, 6 Laurel Street.
Okay.
So the roads that bumped ahead of us, when was the last time they had work done? Because I've been on Laurel Street since it was a dirt road. We were one of the first houses there. We've never had any road work in our entire neighborhood. So that's 26 years, so I'm just curious about New Westminster and Brigham and the roads that bumped ahead of us.
Oh, I know Pitcherville and Birch's, that was the same road I drove on, on a bus when I was a kid. The same pavement.
So they haven't had any done in the last 26 years?
Yeah, like, you're, you're talking, a lot of these are long-term, they was, what, decades, we didn't do anything.
I did Flag Road, and I did Hail Extension, and literally, the gentleman that was up on top of the hill has been there and said, I have never seen this road done in the 30 years that I've been here. Like I said, I, I'm, I came into, you know, way behind, drowning in roads. So I like making things nice and neat, and it kills me to see roads that are better crap. Excuse my English. But the thing is, is that, and people, and I didn't understand until I got into the, the industry, is that everybody's into this environmentally safe, so the pavement that we used to get is not the pavement that we have now. They say it's better, it does not last long. They don't put anywhere near the emulsion that was in it that held stuff together like it does. That's why you see the ravelling, that's what that's called, ravelling, and it falls apart, the aggregate comes out, it fills, it makes a pothole. So if you don't do something every five years to something that you put down brand-new, crack sealing and preventative maintenance, something like that, that falls apart behind you, then it starts degrading itself down. So if we just sit here and only fix a road or two a year, and we got 90 miles of road in town, the stuff that we fixed is just gonna go back again, if not fall apart before I even get there. I was literally 15 years behind when I started, to touch every road once. So that's why we came up with the plan. They said it got shot down for not too many votes, it was minimal, so I, quite honestly, think that it ought to go back up again, because it's not, it's not gonna get any better. We don't have any money, all this money that we're putting in and doing these roads, including the one I'm doing now, is just gonna fall apart. You're wasting, it's wasting towns' money. It's just a Band-Aid that's gonna fall again.
Debbie.
I'm just curious.
Your name and.
Deborah Chamberlain, 7 Laurel Street. I'm just curious why traffic count is your only factor in determining which roads, and we weren't asking for more money or to move ahead, I mean, that'd be great, but we were just asking if you stayed on the same plan that you had laid out before, because if you're gonna go by traffic count over main roads, we're never gonna get done. So we're gonna continually be pushed down and down the list.
Exactly, and that's what I had said. I had said that I wasn't looking to use a traffic count as my easy out. I understand that everybody, including side roads and development, want their roads paved, and that's what I'm trying to do. I've, I've hot-patched Elm Street twice to keep it together, and I've done the same with Brigham over there, to hold it together, to extend, so I could do these other roads that are down to dirt like yourselves, because Flag was the same way, became a dirt road, we paved all, we plowed all the pavement off of it, you know, and then that's just how, what's gonna happen to all the roads if we don't have a plan in place, funding-wise, to fix it.
Also, this is not a new problem. As those of you who've been in town for a long time know, I moved here 21 years ago, and I've been on the board for 11 years. And when I first got on the board, roads were the first problems, and the main problem, because they'd been neglected for years prior to that. Consequently, now it catches up to you. I can tell you, as a board member for 11 years, we've been trying to make an effort to at least do something. Chuck Travis has found his bunny, et cetera, and so forth. So it may appear that we're ignoring everything, we're not. We just have a lot to make up from the neglect of the past. And it's a, it's that kind of a process, and the money's not, you know, just coming in all the time, so it's, it's not a quick process. So I totally understand how you feel, but that's, please remember, this is not something just new. This has been going back at least 20 some odd years.
Yeah, Glenn Grubry, Love and Geordie, and I think, I think most of us agree with you there. We understand it's, it's a money issue, and the board came up with that creative, flexible plan, I don't know, Travis, how long ago, two, three years ago?
2018.
2019.
18, that, that plan, that was way pretty.
The five-year plan?
Was it?
No, 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 no.
I think it was.
Oh, the, no, the.
The board has slipped and had it.
The, the dead exclusion. Yeah, the dead exclusion, that was 2018.
Yep.
Was that long?
Yeah, it was that long ago. That's what I'm trying to say, it was that long ago. Yeah.
So that was initiated by the board, is that true? How, how'd that become a ballot issue? I mean, can we do that again?
You didn't watch the last episode of Selectmen, did you?
I did, no, I'm sorry about that.
I forget, we had talked, because I told them the same story. I told you guys that how far we were behind, and by doing that, it would probably cut it in half by being able to catch up. And that was then, when prices weren't what they were. So then, I know they had come up with a plan, I believe, at once, and I think it was where it had interest or something. So they put the plan out there, and everybody was gonna vote on that, but then they found out a better way of doing it, where all the taxpayers' money would go into the account, and you wouldn't be paying interest on it. So whether that gunshied some people or not, I'm not sure, but that's what I took of it. But really, it is your best bet, bang for the buck, because all your money's going to it.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I agree with that. So how, how do we make that happen again?
So.
That ballot issue?
Right now, we're in a very different spot than we were in 2018. Right now, we're in a very different spot than we were in 2018. Because right now, roads are not the only issue. Like, the word systematic is not something that I would just throw around or structural. Like, it really is, it's not just roads. Like, we're pretty close to having to cut public safety professionals. Where, because it's not gonna be any good if you don't have anybody protecting you while you drive the roads. Or, oh, let's fix the roads and never fix them again. So that's why I'm looking for a committee of, not a committee, a group of residents to assist the administration and the staff in working and prioritizing what would pass in a dead exclusion or an override. Because, to be honest, we're sick of trying and failing and trying and failing as well. So I just wanna know what people would be willing to consider. And to do that, you have to propose during an open warrant to the Select Board, a, either a Proposition 2 and 1/2 override or a dead exclusion. It would go to the Select Board, be approved, be placed on a town meeting warrant. It would need to pass the day on town meeting. And then you get to the really hard part. You would also have to pass the vote. And a lot of people I've seen, not just here, but in many, many communities, and people will, oh yeah, we need this, we need that at town meeting where everybody can see you. But the minute it's just you in the ballot box, your true intentions come out in your wallet, it's the only thing that matters. So it's tough. And to go back, Travis and everybody that works here, despite being overly turned over and having so much on our plates and having no additional bandwidth, are applying for, for every grant we see, are seeking every additional fund that we can get. Heck, another way, if we, if we had more money, we could bring on a grant writer and that person could continuously look for opportunities to bring more money in. But that's not something we have the liberty of having at this time, or ever, maybe never. But it's not for lack of trying on the DPWs we have, on the town employees, on the Select Board, any volunteer, that the roads are behind. And we are looking into different opportunities to try and make this situation better.
What people also have to understand is that this is five years, five years is a long time. So what I have priced out as, and you guys are looking at, on a road to fix it, at that time, that's what it is. By the time it makes it to the fifth year, is probably where it would have been, maybe a maintenance or something like that to it, is now turned into a full reclaim of a road, as you can see. So, I mean, this part of Jordy that's decent, and that was where I was gonna use a heart, call it a SAM coat, stress-absorbing membrane, I was gonna use it there because that saves money through there. And then I would reclaim everything else that was falling apart. That's where I'm saying, that's how I did Pitcherville. Pitcherville, I would have never done Vurches or Cross because Pitcherville would have taken it all. And because I was able to do a section with that SAM coat, put a leveling cone, put the SAM on it, it allowed me to do the other road. That just shows you how much money you can save by using these different. And the SAM we've used on Morgan and Underwood, it's a very, very good product. And it gets you easy 10 years, so, I mean, that's why we do it, so.
With the short-term-
Okay, did you wait just a second?
Oh, it was tailing off, what we were saying on Jordy felt good. That, that, that part of Jordy that was more asphalt, just the gravel and, you know, there's a bit of a grade there and all the gravel's washing down to the bottom.
Yeah.
Do you know what the short-term fix for that is?
Well, we'll go down and look at it. Most likely, if it's dirt, we just have to hot patch it like we do usually. And we just, we lay it out and that will hold it together.
And it's like a hundred feet of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ma'am, would you state your name, please?
Rita Colwell, 19 Vurches Road, on the path that is not paved. It is wearing down and being washed out on both ends. There are like speed bumps from being washed out. I literally have a spring going through my yard which washed out my property from the runoff. Is there any opportunity to fix any of it at this point?
I had, I drove it myself on Monday, because I, no, Thursday, sorry. It was Wednesday, sorry, everything goes together, but I was plowing. But I was paving. So I did have one of my guys go out there and fill the ruts that were there. So he was there, he was grappling patching that day. And I went home that way and I know which ones you're talking about. I haven't had, well, I haven't been able to have a grader go up there and do what we normally do every year, which the road stays together. There's only one area that we usually haven't, two areas that we have is, on the first hill coming from Ragged Hill, we have that area. And we have the other one, which is the larger hills on the left side, which we've done some drainage there and stuff like that. And usually that road holds together pretty well. We just haven't got to it this year because of my, a lack of appointment of employees.
I understand that. There's branches down, there's branches anywhere the drainage- There's trees down across where the drainage is, it's pretty-
We'll go look at that. We don't have a tree department. We don't have a tree department. Right now, I got a two-man apartment.
Yeah, we got a guy's total.
We had nineteen hundred dollars to cut down trees, but we had to cut that in last year's budget to pay the school assessment.
Well, the other thing I was concerned about is during that storm, our road wasn't plowed. And when you finally did send someone out, the truck that was sent out kept getting stuck because it had bald tires on it.
I don't know about that.
Yeah, no, it probably got stuck because-
Are up to snuff, they have to pass inspection. So we don't, I wouldn't send my guys out there with bald tires. So I don't, I don't- The fact that we might not be out there as much as we are on a main drag on the back and side roads, especially a dirt road on a soft storm, because all we're gonna do is chatter and grade that road. So we're gonna wait until it gets to a certain amount and then we're gonna float the blade over it just to get it off so it doesn't build up. And then we'll, when it comes to the end, we usually have a small truck go down it and take care of it, not a large truck. But I can guarantee you, there's no bald tires on any of our trucks. You can go down there right now and see, there's not one.
I hope to go there plowed three times.
We didn't get the call to come get them, so we would have, the mechanic would have been there.
Ma'am.
Okay, I have like two-
Name, your name, please.
Barbara Murphy, Jordy Lane.
Thank you.
I have two questions or statements. First of all, does the town get any money from the pot plant, like tax money from the pot place?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
Quite possibly not ever.
Not ever.
The state has changed the regulations now, so it's very possible we won't get a dime.
Okay, and then my second statement is to Travis. And on Jordy Lane, they go through and cut things with, they cut the trees, they cut things down. I don't know why, they weren't, there were any wires or anything, they weren't sticking out in the road. So there's a bunch of trees with just, like, half-dead, with just limbs off of it. It looks, I mean, the road looks bad enough, it just looks like hell, like, on the sides and everything. And they're not at places where they cut them where it would cause any kind of, people not being able to see where they're driving. But it just seems like they do this every year and it's, I don't know why they would do something like that, just cut the trees for no reason.
Is it the town or was that the, the-
No, it's, and then I, we-
Tree cutters?
I called Travis last year when they were doing it and he said it was gonna look beautiful afterwards. Well, it doesn't. And there's all like spiky things sticking up on the sides of the road, like where the plants were. And then there's trees that just are half-dead, like on the sides.
The easement on east side of the road?
Yeah, the easement probably, how many feet is the easement anyway?
Depends on where you're-
It's 50 feet. I looked on Jordy. Jordy is-
Right, we spoke to you, I did, anyway.
I have plans, they're 50 feet. So the road's, it's 25 from the center of the road over. So the right-of-way for cutting, we wouldn't be cutting anybody's property.
Right.
And we do that for visibility, we do that everywhere around us.
Right, well, it wasn't, I mean, it had nothing to do with the visibility where they were caught. And I'm not talking just in front of my house particularly. I'm talking about some other places where there's no visibility problem and the trees are like half-dead because they will like just cut half, like, half the branches off and everything. And it just, it looks terrible. And like I said, the street looks bad enough with the road situation.
Looks like a tornado went through.
Yeah, it looks like a tornado.
But is it the right-of-way you're talking about?
It's-
The right-of-way?
At the end, not right on the right-of-way, like, up a little bit. Because I can't, unless I know why you-
The right-of-way is, if you're 25 feet from the central line-
Right, I have to go out there with measuring tape and it's not on my-
It's probably like 10 or 12 feet, I think it is.
But why would they cut the branches that are up there which have no-
Because they're not running now.
Because you have to, because they, they come into the road. They look fine now. I literally had to-
And maybe to you-
No, literally last storm and the storm before last when we have ice, that whole road, Dogwood North, Jordy, all those little birches come just like this into the road. We literally had a saw and we'd have to go up a little bit, we'd have to cut them just to let them come up to go so we could plow.
These are pine trees that I'm really talking about that are half-dead, that weren't sticking out.
All those branches, we do that to clear our trucks. And we go as high as the mower can run, and that's any road. I'm in it and there's one other person that's in it. But we did it, I had this conversation prior to, and it's for visibility, every town does it. Because you cannot, I mean, you can, you can, I just did Mount Jeff. Because you have weeds coming in the road, you couldn't even see it come around. And that's what happens, you can't see if an animal comes out or anything like that. And only that impedes traffic, because now the traffic's going around because they don't wanna hit the weeds or a branch or whatever it may be. So we cut the right-of-way, which is normally stone wall to stone wall in this rural town. So that's what we do, we clean it up, a lot of people like it. At first, it kinda looks ant, but then it browns up and then you don't see it.
Something like that in our neighborhood, Jordy, Dogwood, Laurel. How much does that cost?
What's that?
What are you talking about? Going through and cutting the trees, I mean-
That, we do that.
In 26 years, I've seen that happen once or twice.
Right.
So I'm just saying, is, it's not really necessary that that money go towards our road.
No, because it doesn't cost anything other than a laborer in-
Doesn't cost anything?
Labor in the tractor itself and fuel. It's not, we're not hiring anybody. It's literally, and honestly, the employee that's in it gets a dollar more an hour for being it because he holds the license. I don't get a dollar more an hour.
I've seen snake cutting companies though, they're not, you're not hiring out-
That's, that's different, that's, that's a different-
That's different, yeah.
Sir. Dave Coviello, 32 Dogwood Road North. First of all, do wanna commend Travis and his crew with the limited funds they have. They do a fantastic job as best as they can. I did have a question about the new Westminster plan, where it was moved to fiscal year '26, I think. When was the last time?
Next year, 25.
25. When was the last time that was paved? Or done, whatever.
I don't know, it was, it was a while ago because-
It wasn't 2018?
It's gotta be close to probably 15 or more years because 62 was done 12 years ago. And there's only, they had have done Brigham. There's not really much records that I can really look back on, but it's literally an inch and a half over a leg on Brigham, New Westminster. And before I took this position, I was the mechanic. And I used to have to go patch that part of New Westminster right from mere metal on because it just fell apart. So if you drive New Westminster right now, which many of you probably have, you'll see right before Bemis is really bad, after you pass Bemis coming down. I marked out a bunch of areas today, you'll probably see white marks in the road. The paving company's gonna look at it and let me know what it will cost for shimming in those areas. Because, you know, us going out there for one, having to hire a detail and having to go out there and do it, we can't, we can only do so much area in the amount of time that we have. Obviously, we're looking to see what we can afford and move forward.
Yes, sir. I have a question, Steve Casavecchio, 5 Laurel Street. Whose responsibility is it to balance the budget every year?
Just the one-
It's not even, it has nothing to do with roads. Whose responsibility is it to balance the budget every year so you don't go backwards like you've been doing for 11 years?
No, we're, we still have-
2025.
Yeah, we still have balanced budget, it's just the extra money.
He said he was running behind.
The extra money.
Okay.
We are.
Go ahead.
So per the town charter as established in fiscal year 2013, it is the responsibility of the town administrator to present a balanced budget to the finance committee and Select Board annually.
Okay.
It is not the issue of the balanced or non-balanced budget. I can create balanced budgets until I'm blue in the face. The issue is the amount of money that's coming out of one side and going to the other year after year after year without having any substantial growth. Because right now, we're telling the departments, level fund yourself 2% COLA, cost of living adjustment. And 2% COLA right now, as you know, is not an increase. They, that is, you're making less money if you get a 2% COLA year over year. And with everything going up year over year, by telling them to level fund or cut, that's a decrease. So when you're decreasing on one side and the revenue's barely going up and you're passing and you're refusing to pass debt extensions and you're refusing to pass 2 and 1/2 overrides to correct the imbalance in taxation since the early 80s when Proposition 2 and 1/2 was enacted, that's what we're talking about. This didn't happen over the last 11 years and it surely didn't have anything to do with the chairman directly.
I didn't say that.
But this has been four decades in the making and it was, it's decisions long ago and holding off on maintenance of roads and holding off on making decisions about public safety until later. So the deficit is not necessarily a balanced or unbalanced budget. It is a kind of, not a fake number, but it's a, it's just a looming number that is getting more difficult and more difficult. This year, we had to use $90,000 of free cash, which is neither free nor cash and to balance the budget. That should not be the case. There should be a equal amount of expenditures and revenues. And right now, if I were to cut without, cut my way down to making it balanced at the revenue numbers, you don't wanna see what that looks like. Like, this would, this would put the roads, the, like I said, the hundred thousand dollars would be the first thing that went. So that would put these roads two, if not more, years further. So it's something we have to solve, not something we have to look back and place blame.
I'm not placing blame on anybody, I'm asking, okay, I guess I'll rephrase my question. Is that who balances the budget? Who's in charge of increasing the budget?
You.
You folks are.
When was the last time you've asked us to do it? Every year?
It fails. It, no, it fails all the time. We've done like 2 and 1/2 and dead exclusions and they fail. The last time was, was it the road thing or did we do one after that? I wasn't on the board when the roads was through, that was before I was on the board.
I can actually show you exactly.
Yeah, we have a whole spreadsheet, we can show what has passed. It took, what, three, four times before we finally got an ambulance? I mean, it's, this town is not, they don't, I don't wanna pay taxes anymore than I already do. But at the same time, we can't have this crap falling down around our ears, so we need to do something. Eventually, something's gonna have to pass for a override or we're gonna have to basically stop the town. Like, we're gonna have to lose the roads, forget it. Our police will go back to like how we were, what, about 15 years ago and we had no cops overnight. We had to have the staties come and babysit us. You know, our fire department will be in shambles, it's just gonna be a huge shitshow. So I don't want our town to go into a shitshow again, we need to start moving forward. We have kicked the can down so long on roads, on not putting up a building. We'll do it later, it's a mañana kind of thing and we're at mañana, we're here. We have to do something. So that's why Nate is trying to put together a proposal to, for townspeople to get a plan that might actually go to a town meeting and to a ballot and actually pass that makes sense for our residents. So we can fix roads, so maybe we can put up a building so we can balance our budget. We can pay for the school that has rising costs that are going through the roof. It's, there is no end in sight. So unless we start paying more taxes, everything's gonna come to a screeching halt. There's no other way. I don't know how more bluntly to say that.
Plus, you wanna add just-
Yeah. You're welcome.
60, 60% of every budget we have, 60% of our budget goes to education.
I know.
And every year, it's going up. We've tried to present a budget to the town that we feel honestly that the town can absorb, can survive in, get, he gets a little bit more, et cetera, and so forth. And as you, if you went to the town meeting, it was voted down. They wanted to increase it for education.
Attached to on-
First of all, I'll be with you in a minute.
During the August seventh meeting of the select board, I made a presentation that I called the financial obligations assessment. I felt it was a nicer way than saying, hey, we need a two and a half override, let's do something about it. And within that presentation, which I did send out via the same email that I sent out the roads plan, it is a breakdown of every time the town of Hubbardston has proposed a top, a proposition two and a half override, the results, pie charts, all that stuff. So it's available on the internet and there's a breakdown of just how it could happen, what it would take and the opportunities that are there, sir.
Francois.
Just a quick comment to everybody who's here.
You're getting it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Francois Steiger, sixty-five Hillbill Road. I'm also part of the planning board. Thanks for the opportunity to address the public here at large and also to the select board. One thing that I think we need to realize is, is that Nate has been, Nate is new. Uh, he comes with a lot of energy, a lot of enthusiasm. And one thing that I would love to take the opportunity of everybody who's here, because we have a very, very good number of individuals, is, is that to really open up the opportunity for anybody who's here to join this committee. And I mean, could I see a show of hands of who might be interested?
Ah, mañana people, mañana!
So the point, the point I'm trying to make here, and this is great, I, I really encourage people to come. And the reason is, is that unless individuals are actually presenting ideas and ways in which we can work with this budget, we're never gonna get there. I've been in town since nineteen ninety-nine. I've seen a lot of progress. My Hillbill Road was worse than a road that you could travel in Central or South America years ago because it's so full of potholes. And, and they redid it. I had, we had to wait almost, almost ten years for it to happen. I will also indicate a couple of very important items here. We all know that our tax structure here is such that our commercial and our residential is exactly the same rate. We do not have a lot of commercial here and we do not wanna dissuade commercial to join the town. But one of the things that, this is something I've spoken with Nate about several times, is, is that the town of Hubbardston, from a geographic land area perspective, is truly watershed for almost, I think fifty percent of our town is watershed. And there's a very important thing to note, and that is, is that the city, not the city, the state actually gives the value of what that, of what that property is. And let's say, for example, I think the last number that I can come up with is roughly about thirty million dollars. The biggest problem and the biggest issue, and I wanna present this here to the select board, is something that you really ought to be looking into. That thirty million dollars, you divide it by a thousand and then you multiply it by our commercial rate, that's what you get for taxes. Here's the big crux of this here. Over the last two years, our tax rate has gone down, which is great because everybody thinks that we have probably the lowest taxes. The problem though is, is that the state takes the valuation that they have and they assign the commercial tax rate, which for all intents and purposes has gone down over the last couple of years. And even though their assessment of their property has raised or has gone up slightly, it really has not gone up convincingly to what the value is of, of, of that land. Of the twenty-five or twenty-six or twenty-nine communities that are in the watershed, we in Hubbardston have the lowest of all tax rates. And so as a result of this here, we are the ones who receive the, probably the least amount of money per thousand for all of the watershed, which is for all intents and purposes paid by the municipalities and by the M, M W R A customers who appreciate the fact that we are putting land to good use so that they have good water that goes into Somerville, into the Boston area and so forth. But that's an area that we really need to start thinking about. There's a lot of communities and we charge, I think it's roughly a little bit like over thirteen dollars eh, eh, per thousand right now.
Thirteen oh three.
I'm sorry?
Thirteen oh three.
Thirteen oh three. And it used to be fourteen eighty-two. So for all intents and purposes, we've probably lost a dollar eighty over the last two years. And if you compare it against a lot of the other communities that we have in, in our, in our neighborhoods, they're almost charging twenty dollars eh, eh, per, per thousand. And again, I do not want to disenfranchise the few commercial spots that we have here. But we need to start thinking creatively if we can give them an exemption and still make sure that the state provides us the funding that we need. That can potentially represent over quarter million dollars that could, we could get as an additional revenue here into town. And for all intents and purposes, I think that's a very good investment for the state when they think of all the square acreage that we have here in, in, just even in Hubbardston that provides water into the ware reservoir. And again, I just encourage you people who are here to come up with ideas. Sometimes you can save yourself a dollar. Sometimes you can save ten thousand dollars or sometimes a hundred thousand dollars by looking at things creatively. And I think we as a town need to start thinking about this here. So we're not harping on our DPW. We're not harping on our schools. But we have true and adequate funding. And so therefore, again, I encourage you citizens who come here uh, and you have valid complaints. I'm not saying that they're not valid, but we need to figure out another way in which we can address this problem and hopefully help Nate to come up with some ideas. And again, I'm just addressing here the select board with the issue that I have just presented you because I honestly think that there's an opportunity. If we do this here correctly and we start addressing it with our legal counsel, we start looking at the boards of assessors who really should be looking at this here and coming up with a plan on how do we potentially get this additional revenue? And not just simply putting the tax rate down while we increase the assessment and everybody's complaining about they're getting, you know, they're getting socked with a twenty percent increase on, 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 on the value of their, of their property. Uh, yeah, we're all suffering as a result of this year. We're paying out of this year. Now let's look at this commercial thing and we have a big, we have the eight hundred pound gorilla out there that for all intents and purposes is a state. And they should be paying, in my opinion, a fair value for what they are getting. And so please, join Nate and volunteer for these types of things.
And I have forwarded Francois's idea to legal counsel to find out if it is feasible.
Or how to do it.
Yeah. Francois, this is for you. Uh, so dual rate is where you're headed, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's exactly.
And I, I, I said that two years ago, three years ago. They need a dual rate in this town. But they don't wanna accept the current commercial properties that are already here. And I think that's the reason behind it. I'm all for a dual rate personally.
Well, I think we can, we, we need to present it in such a way that it does not become a threat to those who are commercially invested in this town.
And it shouldn't, yeah, yeah.
And shouldn't for all intents and purposes.
Right, right.
But again, the biggest, the biggest taxpayer that we have in town, the biggest single taxpayer who's in town is for all intents and pay, intents and purposes paying every year less and less and less when we take that tax rate and we reduce it. And, and what ends up happening is, is we as citizens start arguing and fighting and saying, wait a minute, what's going on here with the assessment?
Yeah, but I mean, they're lower in that and the assessment goes up, so you're really still paying more.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so, but if you're not getting it through the commercial side, you're going to hit the residential.
Yeah.
And residential here represents over ninety percent, potentially even higher than ninety-five percent of our tax base.
Ninety-six point five.
Mr. Chairman, there is a resident looking to speak, but Peter, on that real quick, the question I proposed to Carolyn was a split rate with an exemption for commercial property taxpayers. So therefore, a business would not have to pay as high as say a commercial property.
So we get the fair value for the money that we should, that we should be getting for the properties that we don't.
Well, it's.
Without becoming anti-business.
Yeah, but.
Great idea.
The, the land that's in the watershed isn't in a commercial, it's not commercial.
Doesn't matter. The state pays, the state pays.
It's not just the formula based off commercial.
Pays the certain amount, yes.
They spay based on your commercial tax rate. So that's where we want, that's, that's where we.
I just want the rich people of Boston to pay our social equity back.
With exemption.
That we're, 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 we are keeping their water super clean for them and they charge their customers an arm and a leg and we are the ones holding their land.
Well, interestingly enough, if I may just tell you something, cause I do pay, I do pay for water in, in the city of Cambridge.
Yeah, and it's.
Water is very cheap. It's the sewage. It's the sewage, right?
Well. Yeah, but it has, it goes the same. So in other words, however much, it's the same with anywhere. You use the water, you have to get slammed with sewage.
Precisely. And so I think what has happened is, is that the waterways have been subsidized by the lows, by the, by the, by, by the low cost of this here versus the sewage has not because quite frankly, those sewage treatment plants are very expensive.
Someone over here wanted to comment. Yes, would you give us any?
Sure. It's Denise Kemet and I live on Dogwood Road. Um, I just wanna say thank you to everybody just for explaining because I think sometimes, um, it's just a lack of knowledge, you know? We just have to really understand what, what exactly is going on and it sounds like it's a budget issue more than anything else, which is my understanding. I also wanted to encourage anyone in here, my fellow neighbors, if you have time, um, and if you have any knowledge in any of the areas that the town needs help. Um, I, I did serve for a short period of time on the EDC with Katie and also with Peter. And it was really a great experience because I learned, you know, a lot of what was going on inside of the sausage being made and it, and it really was eye-opening. And there's a lot of people in this town who care a lot and they, they work really hard. There's a lot of volunteers and they're trying to be creative and come up with ways and people just want, you know, their town to be the same rural town. They don't wanna pass two and a half overrides. Um, but then, and then they don't want commercial, you know? So it's like you really can't have everything that you, you want. Um, so what can we do, you know, in order to, I guess, educate people in town? Because a lot of us showed up for that two and a half, um, that vote, you know? Glenn, Glenn was a real initiator in the neighborhood, went around door to door. We gotta get there. We gotta vote this. We gotta pass this. Um, and it was, you know, what else can we do, you know?
Whatever you did tonight on a larger scale, like this worked. Like, I would like to thank you all for coming out here tonight to express your concerns. This conversation clearly evolved into a different direction than even, than you or I thought it was going to, but that's the bottom line. It boils down to money. So thank you. And whatever you guys did to get the twenty or so of you that are here tonight, that's what you need to do when things are proposed.
Except you gotta go to other roads.
Yeah.
You gotta drag the rest of the town with you. Nobody will come to us.
Get the horse and carry it.
Nobody gets us.
Just a second. Anyone, anyone else who hasn't had a chance to at least speak once before I have to say, speak again? Okay, go ahead.
I just wanna say I think more advanced notification would be good.
Advanced notification?
I just got a email sent and it was sent on the sixteenth at four thirty in the afternoon for tonight's meeting.
That's when it was posted.
That spectrum.
Well, that's, I don't know when the original email went out, but that's, it was posted last week. So we, we don't, yeah. We, we, we don't come up with meetings six months in advance on what we're gonna be speaking about or what the topic is.
I know, but I was asking, people don't know that this meeting's even taken.
Yeah. It's all on our, see, there's this beautiful thing called the town website. And we have it all on there. There's a meeting calendar. There's, you can click on it. It shows agendas for all the different town meetings. It even tells you, like, you could click all the links and it will give you, you know, specific stuff on each thing depending on how, like the larger boards, like the select board and stuff, it'll go into detail and it will drag you to stuff.
I, before I came here, I did not find a meeting calendar on there.
It's right on the front page. There's like a little bar across that says meeting calendar and you click it.
So we do our best to get it out early and admittedly, the sixteenth was the first time that we mentioned doing this. Uh, with Travis being so understaffed, I was hesitant to ask him to do this this evening. So it was something that we just put together about a week ago. In the future, for this type of meeting, I will do my best to have staff members alert the town website a week to two weeks in advance. Sometimes like this, the issue presents itself. If you asked me two weeks ago if we were gonna be talking about Dogwood, Jordy and Laurel roads or lanes tonight, I would say, eh, probably not. But then as we got closer to the meeting, it was quite evident that a conversation needed to be had. So we opened up the whole roads plan. I wish we could announce what's going to be talked about, but we do our best.
Okay, two more, but you've had, and then Mike.
Just a quick question. If two thousand eighteen or so was the last time we did all that, I think that would've been the last strap grant as well. Would that, would we be eligible to be applying for a strap grant again soon?
They've taken strap grants now and for a small rural town, they take, it makes it almost impossible for us to get them because they wanna do like they're doing to Main Street. And you know, our roads aren't that wide. Cause Elm Street is a prime example. Like, we couldn't do anything to that because the property lines are right there. There's, there's, we don't have, they wanna turn it. The cities get it because they, they got bike lanes, they got ped lanes, they got everybody, they got everybody lanes. But we don't have the room to do it. You see what it did to Main Street.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? So it's, they narrow roads to allow bike, bike routes and everything like that and pedestrians. We, you just can't do, can't do it on Brigham, can't do it on Elm. We just don't have the room. So we've applied over and over. We've applied over and over for Lombard and they just wouldn't give it to us. So then that's when we had to use upper money. And honestly, if we didn't do upper money, that was two and a half times what it, what it cost us and what we get in chapter ninety-nine.
Mike?
Mike Stahl, five Lombard Road. Has nothing to do with the roads, my comment. Somehow or other, I'm able to navigate the town website. I know about the meetings. I know about the agenda items. I think the select board can verify that. Mr. Steiger, um, for the planning board. So if I can figure it out, I'm sure most of us can. It's a matter of having the passion and dedicating the time to, to getting the information. We can't always spoon feed everybody. Um, I appreciate the town administrator. Will try and give us more advanced notice. But if you're really concerned about something, you can find out about it and you can be involved. I've been to many, many town meetings, probably more than they, they wanted me to have. Normally I sit quietly by, but I couldn't, I couldn't go longer tonight without noting that there's a lot of people that volunteer their time. Take a lot of bullets on, on all yours behalf and not say that they're not doing a, a really fine job. And, you know, hindsight is twenty fifteen, but we need to get involved more if you're passionate about the town. And get informed in advance so you can be knowledgeable about the issues. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There also is a YouTube page. If you miss any of these meetings and you really wanna listen to us haggle on about roads or whatever the topic was that you missed, you can watch any meeting. They post it on the YouTube page. So you can watch them in their length. You can fast forward it, rewind it, listen to it a hundred times if you'd like. But at least you don't, not that you were there listening to it in person, but at least you can catch up. You know, like if there was something you really wanted to hear, so then you can come and yell at us later.
Too much when we yell. I don't usually come to this.
I know. It is, no.
Okay, uh.
But I'd say those are dark videos. I don't know if you can change the, the angle or the lighting, cause you can't really see people.
Turn up the lighting on your, whatever you're on, because they're not dark on mine.
No.
No, I watch, I watch all the videos. I, and I'm.
You can see it right on the screen right there.
It's bad.
Is yours darker than that?
Yes.
Then something's up with yours.
That is, I will.
I can't see, yeah.
Yeah, it's your computer.
Sorry.
Okay, is there anything else? I know you, you probably didn't get what you came for, but I hope you at least understand a little bit more and got, thank you for mentioning getting the knowledge, et cetera.
I definitely don't know what I'm seeing.
But, uh, we hear, do, we hear you and we are doing everything we possibly can.
I've seen YouTube channel myself, what I'm talking about.
But if there's no other comments, then we'll, uh, finish up on this issue and we'll move on. So thank you again for your anticipation. Travis, thanks for the explanation. Yes, Travis, thank you.
You're fine.
Paul, you're, you're next. I, I realize that you've been waiting. Paul, you're, you're next, I, I realize that you've been waiting.
There's a town report.
Doing a great job, I'm just doing all that. Also, you're talking about, you know, inclined, that everybody knows how to use the internet.
I do, I've got teens in the house that help me, but you're looking at an elderly population, they are not tech savvy.
You'd be, you'd, you'd be surprised how many of them click on the, yeah.
No, I know, I've worked with, I've worked with seniors, I know, and they're not all tech savvy.
No, I know.
To go on that town website.
The website is a lot better than it used to be.
Yeah.
Uh, and there's a lot of good links in there for, uh, individuals not only to get the minutes of the meetings, but also to see the videos and there's calendars, so there's a lot of good information there.
And I'm just thinking about ways to get the information out about why did the two and a half get voted down? What were people's concerns other than, did they understand fully?
Town meetings is very important that people attend because we sometimes have very low turnover, turn, turnout.
Education about why they should attend, they might not know. I mean, how important and why.
I, I think, I think, I think you're right.
And I think they just see that the money is going to the school and they think, no, I don't wanna pay any more taxes to send to the school. They don't really truly understand that you're not gonna get in the ambulance. Our road is almost impassable and I shudder to think that if an ambulance a minute can make a difference.
I know, I've, I've been to your.
A minute, and the town will probably at some point could see a lawsuit. If somebody can't get the help they need because of the condition of a road. And not just our road, I drive, you know, all over town and Pitcherville is horrible, I agree with that.
Yep.
So, and I mean, I'm not just referring to our town, our road, but I mean all of them.
Yeah, but money only goes so far though, we can't like make, like, we had a magic wand.
No, I know. A minute, if the ambulance can't get to you because it's stuck in a pothole, it blew a tire out and your loved one, I'm just saying.
I, I, and, and I agree with everything you're saying and I think we explained the, the financial situation at length and I think Mike explained it very well. And thank you for doing that, cause I had to bite my tongue because it's a pet peeve of mine. This, we put out in how many different ways, how many times about meetings and opportunities for people to come to meetings and vote and do all this kinda stuff. And, you know, we're all adults here, you know, we all have to take a little bit of initiative ourselves if we want to live in this town and be part of this town and help develop this town. And we're doing more than we should have to do, we're doing everything we can plus and there's still no response from the townsfolk, so.
It's tough, if you even look at the election, when we have elections for president and the amount of the town that votes, it's not.
Yeah, but we can't, you know, we struggle to get, we struggle to get town meetings, we have to have fifty, fifty head in that room.
Yeah, the president's one.
We struggled for fifty. To even hold town meetings. And, you know, we struggle to, to do that. I mean, sometimes we have to call friends and neighbors just to get down there so we can hold a town meeting. You know, when you don't have fifty people in your town, concerned about what we're voting on and what we're doing.
That's what I'm wondering, if there's a way to get the information out.
They're very similar. Again, we do it seven different ways, Nate can explain to you all the different ways we send it out.
We did a whole thing on Facebook, that's how we all run together.
It, it's post, okay, so town meetings are posted.
We send mailings.
No, 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 I mean, what's gonna happen, why it's important for people to get there, what this means for them and why they should get there and vote.
Well, you know, we don't, we don't hold, we don't hold town meetings for no reason, right?
Videos. There's, yeah, but there's videos, there's all kinds of information out there.
Maybe an educational video?
We have.
I mean, I don't know.
We, we have, we have.
We have, we've done that.
I've never seen one, where it was posted.
Exactly, that's what I'm trying to say, it's on the YouTube.
And I know the internet, so that's what I'm saying, the old people in town.
Yeah. It's on, he, he's done it.
They're not gonna get it, I don't know.
So we post them to the YouTube, we post them to the Facebook page, we post them on the main website.
Yeah.
But one of the goals that was just adopted last week for the year FY twenty four, this fiscal year, is working with the town clerk and the moderator to figure out ways to get people engaged. We're going to be doing something that we've been calling Government One Oh One in an attempt to get people to come in and learn about different organizations within the municipality and an attempt to get them on the board, but that's very much in its infancy. I just met with the town clerk and law director of the library today. But you will see a good amount of transparency and engagement initiatives coming out of me. I can only do so much.
Right.
And, and everybody is very, very, very busy here too. We're limited in the staff we can bring on, we're lim, and, and the staff that we do have here, their plates are full. And, but we're still gonna try our best to let everybody know. It's actually come down to a pretty funny statement, someone said, did you put out the, the sandwich board?
Yeah, I noticed.
Yeah, fine, we'll put out the sandwich board.
We used to get a really nice mailing when I first moved to town.
I need to interrupt and I apologize, but we.
And it was pages long and it explained in full everything.
We need, we need.
Now it goes to a website.
Everybody, we need to move on, we have someone waiting on Zoom during this whole, for this to be over.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
But thank you very much, we, we understand.
Mr. Chairman, can you invite Francois to join us?
Yes, Francois, feel free to join us and we are jumping ahead to item under new business. Uh, item C, um, the municipal aggregation vendor. That's because we have someone waiting on Zoom for that.
I'm sorry, what is it?
Business C?
C under C, yes.
C C, yeah.
C C.
Hi, Paul, thank you and we're sorry about that. I, I would've told you seven thirty or seven forty-five had I known that number of people would've shown up.
No, no problem at all, it's a robust energetic discussion, so it's, um, it's interesting to listen in and thanks for taking me out of order now, I appreciate it.
Not a problem. So for the good of the order, Select Board, I'd like you to meet Paul Gromer, Paul works for, help me out here.
You, you're gonna help me because I don't have the.
Paul Municipal Choice.
Paul, who do you work for?
Paul Mass Power Choice.
Mass Power Choice.
Mass Power Choice, okay, thank you.
So the deal here is Francois and I, after the meeting, the town meeting where the town gave the thumbs up to move forward in looking at municipal aggregation options, met with a number of vendors who fall outside of the parameters of thirty P.
Consultants.
Uh, consultants who fall outside of the parameters of the Massachusetts procurement law. And we thought the most of Paul and Municipal Power Choice. So we have been working with them to bring forward a contract. The contract will not say North Row in its final version, so I did pick up on that. But I wanted to bring Paul in today to answer any questions that you may have about the process. We haven't really done too, too much in terms of work, but a very positive thing has happened already. Whereas we, during the conversations we were initially having, we were talking about three-year timeframes, four-year timeframes. And just last week, the DPU, the Department of Public Utilities, announced that they were going to be doing a.
Fast track.
What was that?
Like a fast track.
They're gonna be fast tracking municipalities that wanna do this. Just as a sort of reminder of what it is, the municipal aggregation program would take everybody in the town, bring them together and use our municipal aggregation or togetherness to then go and negotiate a lower rate with an electrical provider. I will pass it on to Paul if he has anything for us this evening.
Well, yes, so thank, thank you very much, Nate did a wonderful job of describing how the program worked. As he explained, we're, we're an aggregation consulting firm, we work with thirty-four cities and towns across the state. Delighted to have the opportunity to, to work with you all, happy to answer any questions or talk about the program or just leave it up whenever it's most useful.
So I got, so my first question, um, who are the, who is the list of providers we have available today?
We, we are not working with any provider right now, so before you can even get to that step and Paul, you can please step in. But there's a slew of steps that you, as a, as a community, or in this case, the town of Hoverson has to pass. One is, is what we're doing right now, which is to meet, and I think there's, as a matter of fact, is part of the presentation, if you can maybe bring that up onto the board.
Yeah, I've got this.
There's a, there's a, there's a full set of steps that have to happen and there's a sequentiality of these events that have to take place. Before you can actually, uh, even start, uh, working on engaging with the electricity providers. The very, very last step, which is what, uh, was mentioned earlier, which, which took, was taking a long time, was the DPU itself. And, uh, the DPU was significantly backlogged to the point where they were receiving the applications from cities and towns that were, uh, interested in doing municipal aggregation. And it taking between two to three years before you could actually get there A-OK. And after that, that's when you start really working with, uh, the potential providers in terms of coming up with what will be eventually the bids.
So this is a three to four year plan?
That was the case.
Okay.
However, we've received encouraging news and as I said, the, or I think as, as you implied, the proof is gonna be in the pudding in terms of once, once, once this is put into motion, to see how fast they can really turn these around. So I don't think that we have yet reached the point where we can say, it, it is only gonna take us six months or a year, uh, but there is a, there, there, there's, there's a certain period of time that will, uh, elapse from when they receive the application, they review it, they may have questions and then they sign it off. And it is at that very end point, which is when the consultant here will help us engage directly with the various different, uh, providers and come back with our, you know, through RFP process, come back with what would be the equivalent of a rate that then we as a town can either accept or decline.
So what I see here is you're talking about a fourteen month period to go through DPU to get approval?
So right. So right, right now, there's, what you can see there is.
I'm going on this typical timeline, that's all I'm looking at.
And I'm sorry, I didn't break my glasses.
I'll bring this right over to you.
No, it's okay, I'll take it from here.
Do we add that?
So, I think at one point in time, we, and, and this was very, very, this was very optimistically, no, thank you.
You want these?
This is very optimistic, I think at one point in time, the typical pro, the typical program timeline, uh, the way it was present, even when it was presented here, was extremely, uh, 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 how should I say, optimistic. Where it said between five to twelve months. Uh, at one point in time when we were talking with Paul, it was really more between two to three years.
One to three years. Yeah, two to three.
That seems to be now something that may be improving and we may get a better turnaround time.
Get back to us, yeah.
Hoping, hoping, so, but we don't, as I said, the proof is gonna be in the pudding, once, once we start seeing municipalities present themselves. The benefit of where we are at this point in time is, is that since we are indeed in, potentially interested and again, depending on how the select board decides to go forward or not, uh, if that is indeed the case, then we are well positioned to start engaging, uh, with our consultant here and put our, um, our wheels in motion, which is where this whole thing, I think, becomes potentially interesting.
So, am I okay to speak?
Yes, go ahead.
So, and I think we just discussed before, there will be an opt-out for, people could stay with Na- National Grid rather than going to this program.
So you, at the very end, you'll have three options if you really think about it. Everybody will be opted in.
Yeah.
And you will, or everybody will receive potentially a card. And again, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but as I understand it, everybody is opted in and given the opportunity then to opt out. And so if you are a National Grid customer.
Shouldn't it be the other way around? Why should I have to be automatically opt-in? You should have the choice to opt-in, you know what I mean? But I'm given the choice to opt out, which I think is, is kind of a, I guess, a business thing to get people on.
Paul, maybe you can talk to that?
Yes, absolutely, so, I mean, you're exactly right, the way most things work is you have to make a choice to join rather than a choice not to join.
Right.
The way aggregations or programs are set up under state law is, and it's the way that all have to work if you're gonna have one, is it works the opposite way, which is you get a notice in the mail, you get thirty days to decide and if you don't say, I don't want it, you don't want to be part of it, you become part of it. The reason it's set up that way is that without that, you wouldn't get enough customers in it in order to be able to get, provide enough certainty to the electricity suppliers that you could get a good price. So in order to enable the cities and towns to get a good price, so provide a good, the benefit for residents, it's. It's a, you know, this question a lot of towns ask, why does it have to be this way? That's the reason for it and it's the way it's set up under state law, so if you're to go forward, this is, this is the way, this is the way that it, that it works. You don't really have the choice to do it the other way.
So, I mean, I'm gonna be the devil's advocate here. A lot of people, so what if they, this, the email comes through and, oh, junk mail, see you later. Now they're automatically in your program for one to three years or whatever it is. Um, how do they get out of it?
You're not done at any time. That's, that's a great question too, so you can leave at any time, there's no fee for leaving.
Okay.
And you can, there'll be a program website, you can opt out over the website, there'll be a phone number you can call, you can opt out by phone. You can even call if you want National Grid and they'll take you out of the program if you want. So there are lots of ways to leave, you can leave at any time and there's no cost to it.
Okay.
Peter, if I may, there's one more item that I wanted to, uh, indicate here and that is, is individuals who have, uh, desire to not only, uh, first of all, not join, but also not be part of National Grid, but decide to go with a different provider altogether for whatever reason. They also have that chance, that opportunity to do that.
Okay, excellent.
The only question I would have, Paul, is, is if somebody is already in a contract with a third-party provider, I'm assuming that at that point in time, that individual's account will stay with that provider. Especially if they have, say, for example, a clause in their contract that says if you leave, you would have certain penalties, correct?
That's correct, so if you've already signed with a competitive supplier, you're not part of the group that gets automatically enrolled. So if you don't do anything, you stay out of the program. You can join if you want, but it has to be a voluntary action, you don't become part of the program automatically.
So Peter, those are the only individuals who are going to have the opportunity to opt in. And they may choose to do so based on the rate and the longevity of the contract.
But they could get hurt on the current contract they're in with the other company.
Well, uh, they could if they're.
If they opt out of their contract they signed for three years, let's say, and they, they're only into it for about twelve months.
And if they have a, an exit, if they have an exit clause that requires them to pay a cancellation fee, is an example, then, then that is indeed the case.
Okay, so they'd have to wait for the end of the contract to opt in.
Well, or, or pay the cancellation fee if that's what they want to do. And it's, it's a ma, it's, it's basically, you take a spreadsheet, you make a, you make a calculation on that.
So, for a person that was wise, let's say, prior to National Grid raising their rate sixty percent or whatever, whatever they did this past winter, and they went on one of these programs, they're not gonna be able to get on our program unless they opt out of the current program they're in and pay their fee, which.
Assuming you have a fee, because some, some do not.
Okay.
One of the biggest issues that I found here is, is that back in the November timeframe, when everybody was paying thirty-three point eight cents a kilowatt hour, the competitive bidders that were out there, they not only had very high prices themselves, not as high as National Grids, but they oftentimes put clauses in their contract which basically bound individuals to stay with them for a long period of time and with a penalty clause in it. So you may have been able to get a seventeen cents a kilowatt hour, twenty cents a kilowatt hours, but you had to stay with them for three years. And the breakup fee would be, say, for example, a hundred fifty dollars, as an example.
Like a lease, in a sense, with a penalty, right?
Now, more recently, on the other hand, if you go and look at your competitive bidders out there, many of them are providing you with bids that are in like in the thirteen cents and they are not charging you a cancellation fee. So it's, it's really, it's, it's, it's a market condition.
Yeah, it's like anything else, you see what compelled competitions, so we gotta, we gotta match that.
So if you're in one of those and you do not have an exit clause that costs you anything, you may want to join this, again, depending, uh, on the financial, uh, benefit that you get out of this year.
So, is the rate locked in for the length of the contract or does it flow?
Which one?
The electric grid, the, the, whatever you pay.
Municipal aggregation?
Yes.
The town and the vendor would work to set a appealing length of time based on the rate availability at the time. The consultant would go to, kind of, I'm not gonna call it auction, I'll let Paul go, but no, you would only have to set in for a certain amount of time.
That's right, typically the way it works is the, the town will sign a contract with the supplier. That, that rate is usually fixed, is the way towns do it, so it'll be fixed for, say, two years, so it'll be a flat price for two years. It won't go up during that time, it won't go down during that time. Participants in the program can have that deal for as long as they want it, but if they find a better deal elsewhere, they can always leave and take that other deal if they want.
So it's, so you're locked in for the, now, if, so you're locked in for the rate and the rate's not gonna go up for two or three years, whatever the contract is?
Correct, the town is locked in, so the, the, the price is fixed, exactly right, the town program.
It's like buying oil for your, it's like buying oil. It's like buying oil for your, it's like buying oil for your oil burner on a contract.
Except that the resident can leave if they want.
Yep, right.
It's a one-way lock, really?
Yeah.
So to, to the, all to the resident's benefit, but yes, it's, it's a one-way lock, but it's a, some way conception is still a lock.
Do you offer downside protection?
No.
So is this, so is this something that would be exclusively for Hubbardston, or would we be in a group of towns that would all come together to join, to join a, a group and get the same rate?
So, um, the, the way you're set up now is you're, you're, right now, you're just by, you're just by yourselves. That's the way the vast majority of communities do it now.
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking at you.
Using for one group aggregation now, everybody else is, everybody else is on their own. Over time, though, there's some interest in, in groups signing up, so it could be that you start out on your own, but then later, if a group develops that you would be interested in joining, you know, you might be able to, to join that group at that time, but for the mo, for the beginning, you'd be, you'd be by yourselves.
Okay.
During this conversation, we are speaking with other municipalities about their interest. Like, I've already asked Rutland if they would be interested in something like this, and he's already looking into bringing it forward to a town meeting. And whether that meant they would go with us, or they would go on their own, that would be determined at a later date. Cause when I was talking to Paul, a lot of communities are getting locked out, say, we wanted to go in with Gardner. Gardner has a, has a set contract with a company, so the timing might not work out.
Right.
So that's what's.
Right.
So, Paul, um, so are you, what are you, like a wholesaler, or you don't produce electricity? You're just, you, you buy it from somebody at wholesale price and sell it at retail, is that basically what you do?
That's exactly right, except that that's what the, there are two firms that would be involved in working for the town, so.
Okay.
The firm is just a consulting firm, so we don't buy the electricity.
Right, so you're, okay.
The town, but, but, it's a very good question, cause the electricity supplier we help the town to contract with.
Yeah.
That's what they do, they buy wholesale and they resell to the town, or the residents at retail.
Okay.
They don't typically own, you know, generating plants themselves.
Yeah, so you, as a consultant, uh, I mean, I was looking at all the towns that are involved, are all those towns population grouped together when you purchase electricity?
Each one individually.
So it's each one individually?
Right, yeah, that's kind of.
Each one, each one individually.
Okay, I, I just wanted to, cause I'm thinking.
He's got X number of clients, think of it as individual towns are their individual clients for which he has an individual.
Okay.
Relationship established, and we would be a new client.
Right. But if the opportunity to partner is what I think you alluded to.
You should get a better price.
Then we should, yeah, we should have more buying power and probably be able to get a better price.
Potentially, what you gotta keep in mind is, is that the commodities market, which is really what.
Drives.
Drives the prices, changes dramatically from season and from year to year.
Sure.
Which is really what happened last year.
Yeah.
So even though we may have a good rate at a certain time, a year from now, if somebody else even wants to join us and have more accounts, may still drive up the cost, because at the time of renewal, commodities markets, which typically, it, it, right now, it's typically aligned with the natural gas prices. Down the road, it might be something else, but for all intents and purposes, it is, right now, mostly, uh, natural gas. If renewals become more prevalent or something else, then we may have some other opportunities to look at how do you, how do you balance these things out. But right now, it's pretty much, majority of the generation here in the state of Massachusetts is, comes from natural guy, natural gas resources. And that's why.
Is this, is this exclusively generated in Massachusetts?
Pardon me?
Is all this supply exclusively generated in Massachusetts?
I cannot say, I think this comes in through, please go ahead, you, you have better information on that?
Yes, it would be generated within New England, so.
It's ISO New England.
Both operate together as a regional power pool.
Okay.
And we would, uh, electricity that's generated with some, somewhere within this region.
So you're talking water, coal, nuclear, everything in New England?
You remember that all of the New England power generation is all managed through ISO New England, ISO New England, which is a regional organization that just makes sure that there's enough power in the New England area. And that comes all the way up from Canada, but then they get stuff also from New York and other places, but it's whatever is also generated locally here in the New England area.
So what are we looking for, basically, if we are interested in pursuing this?
Well, I believe at this point in time, and I don't wanna take the words out of your mouth, but I think we're, in front of you, you have the presentation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, which was really very nicely and thoughtfully put together by Paul and his group. There's also a list of items that need to take place and the sequentiality of the events. And an estimated timeline, and before we can move forward, it is really the select board's prerogative to not only review this here, but on behalf of the town to make a decision as to whether or not you would like this to proceed. Understanding full well that you kind of also received a, I don't wanna call it a mandate, but a, 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 a call out by the town that they were indeed interested in this here.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking for a motion to authorize myself to enter into agreement with, I kept forgetting the name of the company, I mean.
Mass power choice.
Mass power choice.
Okay.
Pending review by Carolyn, cause I, she was on vacation last week, I could not get this contract.
Stop talking, so moved.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay, we have a motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion, any cor, further questions?
Nope.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Heather?
Aye.
Opposed, voted in. Motion is carried.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, Paul.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Francois.
Welcome.
Thank you, Francois.
Okay, now.
Nicely done?
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Also, thank you for the information you were providing at that, too.
Well, I think there's more to come out of that.
Travis was taken.
Yeah, there was.
Oh, there, there is.
Okay.
A beating.
We have a abbreviated consent agenda, item six, moveable to the minutes on August seventh, twenty twenty-three, were we all present as far as we. Have a member.
August seventh? I don't have a copy of that agenda.
Nobody does, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm asking that you table the, the minutes.
Okay, we'll table that, right?
They were, they were finished by Tony, but since she was sick, we were, she did not receive the response from, from Katie to, cause Katie checks on her reviews her minutes before.
I look for typos.
Minute, so we'll do two sets or three sets at the next meeting, if that is okay.
Okay, the next item on consent agenda, facilities use request, Hubbardston Lions Club, and we have appointments. Nancy Rogan, Memorial Day Committee Member, term expires six thirty twenty-four. Ed Cronin, Cultural Council Member, term expires six thirty twenty-two-seven, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Unless there are any questions.
No, there's no page three.
Hit one.
So.
Facilities?
Yeah, so that.
Oh, okay, I see.
Okay. No, you're fine.
Thank you.
Okay.
So before we do the motion, are there any holds or any questions on those two items?
Negative.
Okay, seeing none, could we have a motion to?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, the consent agenda minus the minutes.
Minus the minutes, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and second, are there any discussions or questions, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes?
Aye.
Motion, opposed, motions carried.
How about abstentions?
Oh, I thought you said.
The Lions.
No, he's gonna, yeah.
I abstain.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it, I didn't hear that you hadn't voted, so, I'm corrected, so, motion's passed, four votes and one abstention.
And just for the good of the order, it's, I talked to the applicant, it seems the Lions hayride is going to be more of a Halloween spooky walk, because they have already committed that they would not drive giant tractors all over the Curtis recreational fields, so.
Let them use horses.
Okay.
Use horses, we gotta put people on horses to go around.
Or drag, or, what you do it.
It's still dragging something.
A trailer.
Yeah.
On wheels.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, moving on then to new business, item A, FY twenty-five budget calendar, Nate?
This is a regular annual item that is placed in front of you every year. It's a little bit ahead of where it has been in past years, but last year I felt behind and may have overcorrected. But I can live with this budget calendar and look forward to the FY twenty-five budget cycle. We've already started the capital improvement plan cycle, and what I've sent out to the general public as a capital improvement plan, I forget what I called it, but like municipal community involvement.
Municipal.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion?
I do, we need to accept the.
Calendar.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the FY twenty-five budget calendar.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and second, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed, abstentions, motions carried, okay. New business B, special town meeting date discussion, Nate?
We have yet to hear back from Renee, but, and we don't necessarily need a proper vote this evening, but we wanted to present some of the options for special town meeting. Candace and I spoke, and our preference would be the last date, the twenty-sixth.
October twenty-sixth?
Yeah, just be, and the one that, and she had no preference except for the twenty-fourth, because it is kinda messy with the special states and election.
Out of curiosity, what would, what, how many items do we have right now that would be needed for the special town meeting?
Four or five.
Four or five, okay.
But some of them are real, just quick, like, I don't see the school assessment taking very long. I did, we have to do something for the cable committee, because the way we should have done it during annual town meeting is set money aside for last year's negative balance and set money aside going forward, so we'll have to fix that. There, I believe is.
That requires a vote from the town?
Yes.
Yep.
And we will have an open warrant, so anyone that wanted to propose a motion, it would be brought forward to the select board to be considered.
Well, we get our fifty people.
Is it fifty for a special?
Yeah.
Any kind of a town meeting, I believe.
Worms fifty.
Yeah.
I thought we were gonna try and change it.
Well, we're gonna talk about that on, on the road here.
That's an issue to be discussed, yeah. Okay, um, item, new business C, signature authorizations, Cannabis Control Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, like, in the past, the MMA has reached out to ask different municipalities to write letters to the Cannabis Control Commission during their open timeframe to make comment on the draft regulations that have been proposed. I wrote up a draft on be, from myself on behalf of the select board, noting that, just to boil it down, hey, these residents probably wouldn't have voted for this if we knew we didn't have any money, if we knew there wasn't gonna be any money. There was a scent, a smell issue since this has begun, and please hold current contract holders accountable and do not grandfather them into the new law, there will be adequate time for them to file new HCA's with the community at the end of their current deal, that's boiled down what the letter says.
That's great.
CCC is doing us dirty, that's what they do.
Your memo line.
Yep.
Dirty, 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 dirty politics, so.
This doesn't require any action on.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Oh, it does?
Yep.
Okay, have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to allow Nate to send the correspondence, do you need, sign it or send it?
The motion is technically allowing me to sign.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for Nate to be able to sign said memo, maybe we'll, Candace, correspondence.
Motion made, Nate, is there a second?
Second.
Second, and discussion, Francois?
I'd like to add one additional point, and that is, is I know that you have pointed out the issues of the smell, I, and, and other things of that nature. I will say this here, just from a planning board perspective.
Much better.
One of the major, um, components of what we are typically discussing on a year in, year out basis has been issues surrounding, um, the, uh, the facilities, the two facilities that are, are, are going to be, or have been producing marijuana. And so, we are a volunteer force, but nonetheless, it is taking enormous amounts of time, not only from us, but also from other constituents who are also participating, I think you may want to see if there's a way you could squeeze that in, uh, that it's, it's a very hot topic. And quite frankly, they're coming in front of the board oftentimes with changes, et cetera, and it's, it has an impact on the building, uh, on the, on the building commissioner, on us in the planning board, uh, so I think you may wanna, if you can, and I'm more than happy to help you out with that.
Yeah.
Incorporate that into your letter, too.
Could use this of town resources, overuse of town resource.
And I do make a point of that already in there, noting that it is strenuous, but not so strenuous as to equal a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And if it ever did, it would be probably once, and, but, yeah, there are, I will see what I can do on that.
There's a lot of contention in the town at this point in time when it comes to this.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, they're not happy.
We're not, either.
The citizens are not happy in town, about, you know, not getting any.
I remember when it first came out, the picture, and we haven't seen it in time yet.
Yeah, they gotta deal with the smell, although it's better this year than last year.
How many times do we get asked in these meetings, we just got asked again tonight, have we gotten any money from the park?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And as part of my.
Taxes.
Yeah.
We have gotten property taxes from them, they are not delinquent in their.
But that's not the money that they're talking about.
Well, that wasn't clear. Mike saw five, oh, five, three acres?
It's not a ton of property taxes.
No, not a ton.
Point of information?
Yeah.
Are they, are they taxed under the commercial rate?
They are.
They don't have a commercial rate.
They don't have a commercial rate.
What, no, what are they taxed under?
Residential.
One rate?
No, no, but I mean, when the tax assessment does come out.
Yes.
Same as residential, same as your house, my house, or anything.
It's not agricultural.
No, it's not agricultural, let me get back, let me get back to you on that, I believe it is commercial.
Oh, I, I, I'm trying to hint at something.
I know.
Oh, commercial property?
Yes.
Yeah, but, so, I got the other ones. At town.
Yeah.
But he's talking specifically because that would be an avenue to pursue. Okay, anything else on the discussion for this?
Roger that, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion made and second, no, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, opposed?
Aye.
What was that?
She said aye.
Oh, okay, opposed, abstain, abstentions, okay?
Fuck.
Motion, okay, all right, um, item B, two twelve, two twenty-two-four, open government licensure agreement.
Open Gov is our e-licensure software company. They had originally proposed a three-year contract, but because we have had some slight training issues with them over the course of the turnover in the office, I asked them if we could keep a, do a one-year contract with different options to renew if we were happy in the next year, cause these, this company was kind of first to the show, but now there are a number of other companies that may be able to do things better, faster, and more advanced. I don't want to completely discount them, because we did make a investment into Open Gov, we trained, we're going to be training again, and for the most part, it's working and helping a lot with the licensure for building in several other departments, but I wanted that opportunity to get out if one year from now, we are not happy with them once again. So that, this is a similar price to what we paid in the last three years, and it, it's fair market value.
So will you run motion for, for this one-year contract?
Yep.
What kind of money are we talking, I'm sorry?
Seventy-two hundred dollars, uh, seventy, seven, four, five, three.
For one year.
For one year.
So you just wanna limit our liability in case a Benham's trap comes along?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion for Nate to enter an agreement for one year in Open Gov.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
And second, discussions?
Like, this would be a nightmare, like, I don't want to have to redo this, I, I would love for this to work and have it be great, but the training.
but the training was not.
Just in case.
Yeah, but that's part of the contract.
Yep.
So why aren't they upholding their under the contract?
Because there was a complete turnover.
Here?
Yeah.
So what? This, if, if they offer training, they, and they don't provide it, their, their net goes in on their contract.
And that's why they did the.
One year?
The one year.
So that's a wash then?
So that they can come out and do the training, cause basically what happened is they came out, trained everybody, and then everybody left.
Yeah, well, it's not their fault.
So, like, no, it's not their fault.
It isn't a contract to train, so.
Yep.
And they didn't put a time limit on personnel, how many are they gonna train, right?
And the staff members that are here now, I'm gonna say this smooth, are not as technologically advanced as the staff members that were trained in the beginning, so.
Okay, anything else for discussion? All right, and all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed, abstentions, item carried, okay. Uh, under old business, I don't think we have anything unless you, anyone has any old business? Okay, we'll go to the TA report.
I believe under the large amount of talking that I did tonight and the fact that I sent out a bunch of emails, you're pretty much aware of everything that was in the TA report, would like to congratulate treasurer collector Mary Markowski on her acceptance to the MMA Financial Management Seminar. Sent you an email about that this morning. It is, I believe, an eight-week course that is competitive to get into, so.
Is it UMass? Or where is it?
She went to.
Suffolk.
Suffolk.
It's a, these are a partnership between Suffolk University and the Massachusetts Municipal Association. So you get very, very limited master's level credits, but then they don't transfer anywhere. So I learned that fact the hard way, but.
But it's still knowledge.
Yeah, it's still, it's the, the one I did was the best program I have ever participated in. They actually boiled, boiled the education down into a municipal level, cause that's who it is. It's all municipal professionals of varying ages and varying experience, so.
Now is this she, one she's going to, or one she just did?
This is one she's going to.
Okay.
Though, that's where I was going as well. Bobby and Mary, the whole treasurer collector's office, went to treasurer collector's school last week and took their treasurer collector test. It is a very, very difficult test. I, the passage of the test is not part of their job description or duties.
Did they pass?
We don't know, we won't know until, until the end of the year, but.
Oh, really? That long?
Close, yep. They said they would start grading them at the end of September.
Oh, thanks.
Yep, so the test is.
So they can do the job without passing a test?
Mary's job has a stipend, Mary's job description has a stipend attached to it. If she was licensed, Bobby's does not.
Yeah, okay, excellent.
But it is a notably difficult test in a style that is not practiced much today.
Do they think they passed?
I haven't talked to Bobby, but Mary feels good. Bobby, he, Bobby took the day to help with the family thing.
Okay, anything else on the town?
Nope, things are, things are going very well. We're cleaning up, getting ready for the budget cycle. Um, there's been a lot of vacations, so I've been.
Uh, that's almost done, that's.
I've been here.
Yeah.
Um, we started the capital improvement process and are working towards some of the goals and looking forward to the fall.
Okay, policies to review.
Can you talk a little bit about the deck, the senior center deck, who do we stand there? Did you any bids?
Still over a hundred.
Yep, so we did get.
How much now?
We did get two bids for the senior center deck. And one bid was two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, the other bid was a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Don't quote me, it could be one fifty-four, and so.
And how many, and how much have we got allocated right now?
Forty-five.
One tent?
Oh.
And so the senior center is working on figuring out what they want to do. They applied for some local grant money through GFA and the Athol Savings Bank. I reached out to Carolyn, who, as I mentioned earlier, was on vacation, so she has not gotten back to me, about how long we can keep the lowest bid kind of on the hook. His name is Rob Desprey or Dayprey. And he's a relatively new company. The other company around two four, two twenty-six was Busy Bean Nursery out of Berry.
Holden, I think.
A lot of Holden, yep, so.
Is that doing it per design, that the design they had with the blockwork and?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, so we will see. I will keep you updated on that.
They're just building a building over there.
The senior center is looking into their options. I told them that they could only have so much time and that I'd be willing to rebid it.
Wow.
Yeah.
What are the, what are the, what are the thoughts about a redesign, something more affordable?
I'm giving them the week to kind of get their ducks in a row on what they wanna do before coming forward with any discussions of remodel or anything like that.
Okay.
It was originally proposed in this fashion because a former interim building inspector had noted that a deck would not be able to go there due to the septic tank.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, so there's some issues, I guess, with location. It's unfortunate.
Okay, policies, uh, credit card policy?
Do we get a credit card?
Nope.
Why not?
Nope.
Why? So we're, we're officers of the town.
You could use it.
It goes right above our pay.
Yeah.
To.
With our pay?
To go to select board training, so.
Francois's paying, everybody else is paying, yeah.
So, long story short, prior to her departure, Sandy Nathan, the former treasurer collector, had a town credit card under her own name, her own social security number. That is not, no longer best practice, and it is not something that anyone currently under employment by the town of Hubbardston wants to do, or I would recommend to them that they do. Uh, so we are looking to look into different programs to utilize a low limit, like two thousand or twenty-five hundred dollar credit card to limit the number of reimbursements for employees. It's not that the employees do not want to do the reimbursement cycle, but Heather, yes? Yes, Heather?
I was gonna let you finish, Nate. I was just making sure I got in the queue.
All right, but it's a.
There's a long line.
It's a credit card policy designed after many others, including the P-card policy that Heather had sent me from Paxton. It would be kept in the treasurer collector's office and guarded in adherence with the, with the policy. You would have to show that you tried to get it invoiced and there was no way before being able to use the card.
So it's last resort.
It's, oh, yes, one hundred percent last resort. So Heather's in the queue. Heather is in the queue.
He fits now.
Go ahead, Heather.
I was just gonna say a couple of things. Um, so as far as the credit card goes, I think it's a great idea for town to have a purchasing card. Um, it's something that not only comes in super handy, but it also allows you to avoid having to do reimbursement. So I know Nate was saying that, you know, most of the employees aren't upset about doing reimbursements, but when you start looking at risk management, reimbursements for employees is one of the highest forms of risk for financial fraud, right? Cause you can easily buy something small, um, no one notices that all of a sudden disappears, you return it, you get your money back. So it's one of those things, it's easy for it to get through, so this is a good protective measurement, um, to go around it, right? To have the P-card. Another benefit of having a P-card, especially in some of the programs, is the town actually gets rewards, money coming back to the town, right? Just like you do on your own personal credit card that has rewards on it. Um, other things that are easy, it's really nice to track. It also reduces the amount of work in the accountant's office, right? So instead of the accountant having to give a W nine for every single vendor, they simply pay the credit card and not, you know, ten vendors. Um, so it does reduce the amount of work there as well. It's a lot easier to track. Um, there's different financial reasons put up there. I know Nate right now is proposing to start slow with just having one card. Um, I'm obviously huge proponent of this program. I've done it in pretty much every municipality I've been in. You know, I'm, I have a lot of faith in the program, cause I've been doing it for a while. It takes a little bit longer to get everyone on board, um, once they're not used to it. But in general, I mean, I have no qualms about having department heads have it, right?
Agreed.
If you have a police chief who's going away on training and he has to buy and pay for transportation, he can use that. If he needs to pay for the conference, he can use that. It's a lot better than people putting it on their personal card. Plus in small towns, or especially with, uh, employees who don't make a six-figure salary, it's not particularly always easy for someone to say, okay, I'll put the seven hundred and eighty-dollar charge on my credit card and hope I get a reimbursement check before the bill comes in so that I can pay my bill on time. So it's, I, I'm personally a huge fan of it. I think it's a great program. I think however Nate and Mary are comfortable launching it and bought, uh, all the finance team initially. But, you know, again, if it grows, I think the only hesitation I have in the current policy is the idea that you keep one card and it's kind of locked up.
Yeah.
That means people don't really have access to it when they need it. It's a little bit inconvenient. Um, as opposed to, you know, when you have this card, you know, it's very easy to check, it's very easy to monitor, keep track. You didn't get an alert every time someone uses a transaction. Um, I think it still would benefit us to think over time of having department heads each have their own card, or at least those ones who make regular purchases like DPW by our lease. Um, cause I think it's a larger benefit to everyone, including the town. Saves time, um, is more efficient, and is a safer means to use.
Okay.
So I guess, I don't, you know, thank you for that, Heather, with your experience on that, but I, I mean, I, to me, it just sounds like a no-brainer. Why don't, why don't we just?
I think I'm up in court.
Why don't we just, Chris?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I, I think it's a no-brainer.
Here.
I abstained. Is that a motion?
Okay, uh, any more discussion on this? Cause I guess a motion would be.
Approve the policy.
To approve it, yeah, okay.
Adopt the policy, my apologies.
Someone like to make that motion?
I will make a motion to adopt the policy.
A motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any, any further discussion?
Yes.
Go.
Um, is the motion made, gonna be, make changes to the policy for department heads to have a card?
Not at this time as of motion, as of the motion that is on the floor. I request that we start in this conservative fashion, and then once we judge.
Meaning one card.
Meaning one card.
One card.
Locked up with the paper, and then once we do determine that the program is working, we can evolve.
So this is one card, Peter, this motion.
Okay, let me say this. What's the difference between one card and three cards, other than two cards?
I.
No, there's no difference, right?
No, I guess my thought process here was to be more conservative than I thought I needed to be in, just cause I know it will help the offices. So will that. Like, I am not opposed to striking some language, I'd have to look at it, to make it so a department head in certain departments could have their own version, their own copy of a card or their own card specifically. I'm not opposed to that.
How's everybody else feel about?
Well, what's the challenge of getting additional cards after you get one card?
Limited, make just as easy as, as with a personal credit card. You reach out to the.
Well, for the sake of being able to vote on this tonight, should we just get one card and then we can talk about more cards next meeting? If that's something we wanted to.
Or we could, you could do that, you could.
Just so we can start the process?
Ad- adopt the policy with the change and, and I could change it up and send it back out. And it would have, would have already been approved.
So before, when they had the one card, and it was kept in the safe.
Yep.
And it was only used for specific items.
Yeah.
Like, I don't think there's a huge currently need for department heads to have them. Maybe, I would, I would suggest starting out with one, getting it, to get everybody back into the process, cause it's been a while since they've used them.
It's a funny, it's a great card, come on.
I understand that, but you don't, I get that, but we've also had issues with.
You know, everybody lives on credit cards today.
But we had issues with that before, so if you start going wild, the people start looking.
Previous employees, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
People start looking at it, and it's funny. I get that. I'm just, I'm erring on the side of caution because you can add more.
They're not here anymore. Okay, so let's, let's.
But once you put it out there, then if something goes haywire, it all goes away.
What?
That's all I'm saying.
All right, well, why don't we then vote on this particular motion, since it's on the floor, and then, depending upon that.
I'm not clear on what we're voting. Voting for one card?
One card at this particular point in time.
One card.
The adoption of the policy as written.
If it doesn't carry, then we can, someone else can make another.
I make a motion that we adopt the policy as written.
Okay, that, I think we've already.
I already did that, yes.
Second it.
Okay.
No, we've already got that. All right, so we will take a vote on, uh, accepting the, uh, the one card, correct?
And then what I'll do is I will have the financial office start the, the process
Gotcha, yep.
and then bring a change forward to allow certain department heads, namely, please fire Travis with the DPW to have their own version of the card.
If they even need it.
If they want it. I'll talk, cause there's not many of us.
Exactly, they might not even need it at this, that's what I'm saying.
I think they would accept it because of the safety that it would give.
Yeah, so it's.
If they were ever out on training and something happened, they wouldn't need to spend all of their own money, but.
Yeah, how, how is it now, if they, if we have an ambulance run somewhere and, and. This, you know, mine, I think windshield wiper goes flying off the ambulance in the winter. How do they fix that? Who does, who takes care of it? Now they can't drive it. Can they go to the auto parts store and they buy it out of their pocket and get reimbursed? Is that how it has to be?
That is current practice, yes.
And the, I mean, I understand the chief's not driving the ambulance, but you can definitely call up over the phone and order a wipe.
Unless, say, the Hubbardson Fire Department has a, what do you call them, a.
Or a flat tie or anything like that.
CAP in Gardner. In that event, you could run, you could run over there and they would invoice us.
Roger that. Or an inventory of windshield wipers.
Or an inventory of windshield wipers.
Okay.
Don't say it can't happen, cause it can't happen.
Just call the vote, please, okay? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Yes?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? One, abstentions, motion is carried. Uh, next item, the digital records and retention policy.
Digital. So this policy is just safeguarding the almost one hundred thousand dollars of investment made by the state and the municipality over the last several years. I just wanna make sure there is something to ensure that the departments are utilizing and keeping up to date the LaserFish software. The implementation of the policy is just step one. This is a pretty onerous task. I'm not looking forward to working on standard operating procedures for the implementation of this because we do not have staff time like that, and our current senior workoff staffing is not the.
Digital recording type?
pinnacle of techno, technical savvy. So this is a start. This will likely have revisions in the future, but I did wanna start somewhere with, so that employees would know that we. What?
I think a college can turn.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Can we get back on track?
Yep, sorry.
So that we would know that we are serious about this moving forward. We are going to work on the retention schedule because once approved, the LaserFish system will allow us to shred permanent documents relatively quickly, thus opening up space and bringing to fruition the goals of the program. So I just kinda wanted to make sure people were doing it.
All right, any motion for this, or?
Yes.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to accept the digital records and retention policy.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
And second. Any further discussion, any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Yes, aye.
Aye.
Heather?
Yeah.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Uh, Matt is not reasonably interested by the chair. I don't have anything, is anybody?
I do.
Clock.
I wanna talk about the, um, reduction of the quorum needed to hold a town meeting tonight, and where we.
and where we stand on that, and what we can do to make that happen.
I remembered to look into it this evening, so I wrote quorum adjustment on the top of my paper. I have not looked into it since our last meeting.
Good.
All right, anything else?
First of all, uh, I apologize if I jumped the gun, uh, personally to you in terms of the discussion we had earlier, uh, when it came to the, uh, the matter of the watershed. And, uh, I, 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 I thought it was opportunistic. We had a large number of people here. And again, I think we need to encourage the towns' folks to join if at all possible. I also encourage the fact that you are working also with the town council on looking at some of the possibilities. I just wanna present to the select board that the biggest issue I think that we are going to be facing going forward is, is you're going to see, yes, obviously what you see tonight, individuals who come here because their certain needs, uh, have not been met, and they definitely would like that being met. However, there is going to be always strong opposition when it comes to how are you gonna fund it? Especially because the funding comes from the personal residential taxes that are imposed. And either they are going to, uh, ask and file for abatements, or they're going to reject your two-and-a-half override. I think that we really seriously need to start looking at other sources of revenue. And I will just present to you the fact that, as I mentioned to you earlier, the Town of Hubbardson has the lowest, uh, rate when it comes to the commercial rate. There are towns amongst those who are participating in the watershed program whose, uh, commercial rate is as high as eighty dollars, uh, and that definitely is an outlier. Uh, however, I think we really need to be much, much more proactive about figuring out how do we do the commercial rate, because of the fact that that potentially can be a significant source of revenue for the town. We need to do it intelligently, because we, again, as I emphasized ear- earlier, we do not want to do something adverse towards the commercial...
The smaller businesses.
And the smaller businesses that we have here. However, uh, we, we definitely need to look into that. The other thing to keep in mind, and this is certainly something that we as a town need to also consider, I'm asking the town administrator to potentially even talk about this here with other town administrators who are also part of the watershed community. We have the fox, as they say, guarding the hen house. And what I mean by that is, is the state basically assesses the value of the land that we have. Uh, and that is certainly something that, on the long term, needs to change. And that's something that has to be done via, uh, work with our legislature body and so...
It would have to be done in Boston.
It has to be done in Boston.
Right.
But nonetheless, we need to start figuring out a way in which we can get a community, or the set of communities who are all impacted by the watershed, to start talking about this here and making, uh, and making strides to make that realization. There's some very interesting documentation that is out there that basically indicates there's two sources of funding that the state brings. Watershed is one, and state on land. State on land, for intents and purposes, has been underfunded, uh, by the state of Massachusetts, forgotten those many years, and they know it, and they haven't done anything about it. Uh, so those are two areas that we, as a community, are impacted, and we need to start looking into this year. By itself, Hubbardson will not be able to move the needle. This needs to happen with a concerted effort of the communities that are not only around us, but also with the representatives that we have, either in the Senate or in the House of Representatives here in the State House. And I think also we need to start working with the press on this here. Uh, communities that are, uh, inside of the 128 built at this point in time, as I mentioned to you earlier, uh, they have caddo of attorneys and advocates and God knows whoever else who are constantly looking for monies, and the opportunities are there. Uh, everybody says, wonderful that Hubbardson has such a low tax rate. Uh, it's, it, it, quite frankly, is not a low tax rate.
No.
If you go to a place like, and I'm just giving you an example because I know about this here, the city of Cambridge, for example, their, their residential tax rate is just under seven dollars per thousand, whereas we are paying almost twice as much. Now, ours is low when you compare it, say, for example, to the remaining towns that we have in this area. But it is, uh, it, it is killing us just by virtue of the fact that we're not getting the revenue from the state as we should be for that very valuable resource that we're giving. And if we do not wanna have infighting amongst our own population because of the revenue issue, we need to start barking up a different tree, and we need to start taking that resource that is rightfully ours and going after that in an intelligent manner. And again, thank you very much, uh, Nate, for helping, uh, facilitate that.
I mean, who do you start with with that, the assessors' office?
I started with Carolyn to find out if it was legal to do, 'cause as I told Francois, I feel like if it, there would've been someone that figured this out before, but maybe not, maybe Francois is a, is a genius.
Yeah.
But we're, we're looking into it. You would start with the assessors during the setting of the tax rate.
A split tax rate, yeah.
Mike?
Mike Stahl, by Lombard Road, um, to piggyback on what Mr. Steiger said. I attended a Ware River Watershed Committee Meeting, and they brought this up. And what they're proposing to do is to try and get a community group representative, and I'm gonna say this wrong, on the MDC, I'm using the old term, but MW...
MWRCC, I think it's.
Whatever that thing is.
Massachusetts Water Resource Association, whatever it is.
That, that's it, that one.
MWR.
And that, we're one of the impacted, um, constituents of that, yet we don't have a member on the board, so that's out there, and I, I didn't know if people were aware of that or not.
To know that.
So that is, I think, a good thing to know, because it, it falls right in line with what Mr. Steiger was saying. We need to move, it, it can't be just Hubbardston.
No.
It's gonna have to be a, a greater group than that.
So Ware River Watershed has no representation on the MWRA board?
Communities don't have any, any...
Hubbardson.
So communities have no representatives on land that they pay us a fee for?
Yes, and, and what that fee is and how it's calculated and all that.
Well, it's funny numbers.
So it's certainly something that we need to very seriously consider and very seriously look into.
Yeah, oh, yes. No, that's, it's...
The other thing to note here is, is the idea that I presented may not fly.
Yeah.
But I think we need to start thinking about how to make it fly.
Outside the box, yeah.
Maybe, a- again, sometimes you don't go through the mountain, you go around the mountain.
Yeah.
And this is what we need to start looking at. And we're talking about not insignificant amount of monies. So that's where our biggest potential source of revenue is.
Well, yeah, I mean, if that rate went up a couple dollars per thousand, I mean, you took our good money off, just off the water.
The average, the average towns that are participating in the watershed, I, I, I can calculate it again, but it's roughly about twenty dollars a, uh, per thousand. We are at thirteen dollars, and we are the lowest one of the...
I grew up on that watershed in South Dakota. It's just, my mother always complaining about the water bills, too.
So, again, I think we're shooting ourselves potentially in the foot when we are reducing our tax rate and just simply bringing up the assessments. Uh, it just does not make a lot of sense, quite frankly.
No. Leave the assessment alone, just raise the tax rate.
So, let's, uh, put this off to another...
Thank you.
Uh, date and another meeting, 'cause I think it's a great idea. Uh, okay, thank you again. Uh, public press, nothing?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, to adjourn.